3:00 PM in the evening, I would like to convene the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, February 24th, 2021 at 6:33 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the district website at the posted URL. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so in the following manner. NCAT, Educational Channel, Verizon Channel 29, Charter Channel 198, 194, or SAM Government Channel, Verizon Channel 37, Charter Channel 192. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. There was a way to, in advance, to register for this webinar. The first item that we have on our agenda is the minutes of January 20th, 2021, and there was a set of amended minutes that were sent to us by the superintendent on February 23rd. I'd also like to state that the materials that we are reviewing tonight were sent to all the members and posted at the town bulletin boards on February 17th, 2021. So at this time, I would like to take a motion to accept the amended minutes of January 20th, 2021. So moved by Sean, seconded by Chris Covino.
Yes.
Okay, and if everybody got a chance to see the amended minutes, it was on page four that Greg had sent out to us, and it was highlighted in red. Is there any discussion on the motion to accept the minutes? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Buck is absent. Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond? Paul Desmond? Kathy Highland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda? Absent. Shawna Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Pletchko?
Yes.
And myself, and it passes unanimously for the members that are in attendance tonight. The next item that we have is educational policy, and there is none at this time. Going to letter C on the agenda, new business legislative update. I'd like to now turn it over to Superintendent Martino.
Thank you. Just a quick update on the FY22 statewide budget. Governor Baker released his budget last month, which represented a $45.6 billion budget, which is the House One budget. Usually that is the baseline budget, which we build all of our projections and estimates. I think some of the highlights in the budget that was proposed is the funding of the Student Opportunity Act. For the first year, it was supposed to start in fiscal year 21, but was pushed off as a result of the pandemic. We also are seeing that our Chapter 70 funding is as projected at this point in time, and we're also seeing regional transportation and some of our other uncertain accounts being funded at the levels that we projected with the fiscal '22 budget that we will be presenting to the school committee this evening. So at this point in time, I think, you know, it is a process that takes many months. As you know, the state budget for FY2021 was just approved a few months ago, and we anticipate there'll be some new information and budget changes as the budget process moves forward at the state level. So Becky and I are staying informed on these budget, this budget work at the state level, and will keep you informed as if there are any significant changes.
And also under the legislative update, I'd like to also bring to the attention that the Northborough Selectmen and John Kudere, the town administrator, have invited the legislators to be present at their Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, March the 7th, March the 8th. And an email was sent out to all of us on Tuesday, February 23rd, and inviting, I think it was sent out to all the Northborough members. So if the Northborough members would like to attend, there is a link that we could send to you. So please let us know if you would like to attend that Zoom meeting. Okay? And there was also the letter that the Board of Selectmen wrote through the chair to the legislators, and on page, page four of the letter, they talk about local aid increases, the Student Opportunity Act, Special Education Circuit Breaker, Regional Transportation reimbursement. So there are one page of things that deal with the K-8 School Committee and also the Regional School Committee, especially the Regional Transportation and Special Act. Okay? All right, the next item that we have, Mr. Martino, is the COVID-19 update.
Sure, I will turn it over to Mary Ellen Duggan, who has been working long hours trying to launch the COVID-19 screening program, and she, she and her team have done amazing work. And I'll have, ask Mary Ellen to provide a brief update.
Sure. While we started pool screening for staff three weeks ago, we've done three full weeks, I think, so of the pooled screening for staff, we added in some elementary schools the week before break, and we went to the high, we offered it to high school students during break. And the week before break, we had 82% of our staff participating, which is a great number. As of today, as of this minute, we have 2,200 students registered for the pooled screening to take place, and that's about what we saw with staff when we started out. We had a little bit less than 50% of staff that participated, and it grew each week. So we're hoping as we continue that that number will continue to grow with the student participation. We're seeing it already in the four pilot schools, the four elementary schools. We had a lot more people sign up for this next, this next week. So that's where we are with screening. We're jumping into this pooling with both feet, and we're ready for it, I guess. I think that's probably about it with our screening. I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at the dashboard that we are tracking our screening and testing, because we also provide testing for symptomatic staff and students on Fridays, because the symptomatic or quarantined people should not participate in the pool. So we offer that on Fridays for our symptomatic or quarantined staff or students. And our numbers are staying right about steady. We didn't have any positives from our vacation pooling, which included students and high school students only and staff from all over the district. We had, the numbers that we, that we screened were really low, but it was vacation week. So we were, we were just kind of doing it as a bonus and to get it started at the high school.
The only, only additional information is that we are making testing or screening mandatory for, for students who are participating in athletics as a way to increase participation and also extracurricular activities. So I'm not sure if Principal Bevan or Mary Ellen wanted to speak briefly to that.
Yeah, sure. Mary Ellen and I worked closely on this, and we gave it a lot of thought. And I, I think especially with the fact that the sports were running and Fall Two are higher risk, it feels like the most prudent thing to do to ensure that we can get the whole season in and to have athletics not possibly jeopardize our ability to have in-person instruction continue uninterrupted. So I got a few emails from parents asking for clarification on, you know, on our thinking behind that, and I, I responded to those, and we're, we're giving a little bit of a grace period for students who may have missed the first round. And so we're, we're trying to be flexible, but still do what we think is in the best interest of keeping school operating without interruption and also to keep athletics happening. I'm really pleased that we're able to offer Fall Two. It seems like so long ago when we were even considering it as a possibility, it seems like such a distant possibility, and here we are. So we're, we're excited about that.
Yeah, it's been really great to have the sports, be able to continue their sports and not have to stop them. This will just give us that added layer of protection as we go forward with our Fall Two sports, where some of them are a little bit more high-risk than what we've had. So I think that's great. And I just pulled up the numbers. We have about 720 high schoolers registered as of right now for the screening. We're off to a good start.
Mary Ellen, I see that there are several board members that have questions, and I just have one. If a coach who is not a staff member per se, that's not a teacher in the district, if they wanted to participate in the pool testing, can they?
Yes, we've been, coaches have been participating all along.
They have been, okay. All right, Mary Ellen and Greg, I have, Mary, I have three school community members have questions. Would you be able to answer their questions?
Sure.
Okay, so we have Karen Ayers, Kathy Key, and then Shawna Shea right now. Karen?
Yeah, thanks. So just to clarify, Mary Ellen, the 2,200 students is the students overall in the district that are registered, and you have 720 at the high school. Does that, that doesn't include the sports players, the athletics yet, because they're, you don't know? Does that include them yet?
Yes, it includes everybody, anybody who registered.
Okay, so I guess that brings, I just have some feedback, and I, I feel like you've probably been getting it, because as a parent, there was a lot of confusion around the signup. My kids did get signed up and are all set, and they were able to get, participate in the Friday pool testing, but there was confusion on that, because people didn't know that that was even an option. So I just wanted to kind of just provide that feedback to you. And so moving forward, I guess that's another thing that people weren't really sure of, is they can still register. It's not going to be closed, the Google form. They can still register every week?
Yes, the, the wrong Google form is closed.
Okay.
The correct Google form for registration is open. So there was some confusion there. There've been many, Sean has sent out many notifications, as, as Greg, with the correct form, and people kept going back to the incorrect form that was sent out in January. So we do realize the confusion. Everybody that filled out that form, we call, referring to it as the interest form, were notified personally by me Sunday to register using the correct form.
Gotcha.
So it's an open, it's a, a open registration. It can happen anytime. I think the other part that was missing is that that was step one. Step two was to send in a signed consent. Then there was a special email for the signed consent to go to, the ARHS consent, and that was step two that was overlooked by some people. So in order to hand out the first test kit, we needed to have a signed consent. That was the only way that we could track that we had the consent for anybody that got a test.
Okay, great. Yeah, good. I mean, this is all fabulous, and I'm sure the kinks will get worked out, and it's all work in progress, but thank you. Yeah, and I just, I guess my other comment would be then, I know just in former emails that I have even missed links, like Greg's district update, right? That maybe had some COVID information, like if it would said COVID screening signup, that gets a lot more attention because it's buried, you know? And that's just feedback. So I missed it, and I'm looking for it, so.
So we're working on that with Galen Hammond, who's setting up our, who's our webmaster there. So we sent out a few, the high school didn't, wasn't privy to this, but you know, as Greg said, I have a Netflix series now of me swabbing my nose from many different instructional videos. So you can, you'll get one of your own nurses doing it.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
I just add too, I think we are going to be having conversations too with, with Principal Bevan and teachers to see if we can recruit them to help kind of get the word out that testing is an option, and maybe having teachers do a little demonstration around what the kit looks like in class and showing the video, so at least students are aware that this is an option for them, and that might generate some additional participation. Our goal is to get 80% participation or greater, so we have some work to do in that area.
Okay, thank you. Next, Kathy Key?
Thank you, Joan. So first, I'm really excited that we are doing the testing. And I guess my question is, why are parents so hesitant about having their kids do the testing? Because I have three kids in college, and for everyone who has a senior, when their kids go to college next year, chances are it's mandatory to get tested. And I know we're not making it mandatory, but it is mandatory to be tested one to two times a week in order to stay in in-person class. So do we know the feedback from parents of why they're hesitant about having their kids tested?
I think some that I've heard is they want to see how it works. How it'll play out, how, you know, how is it going to really work? How are you going to get the tests out to the kids? How are the kids going to get the tests back to the school? And checking in and all of that. I think some people wanted to see how it would work. I think the signup confusion was part of it, too. I think there's people on both ends of the spectrum that are like, yes, test, 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 test. The more we know, the better. And there are other people who never want to have a test in their life. They don't want to take part in it. They don't, I don't want to say don't believe in it, but don't want to be a part of the testing.
But I know, right, like I said, like when they go to school, like if my kids don't get tested, they get fined after a certain amount of time, and they can't go participate in in-person classes. And if our goal is to get these kids back in school, I, you know, I understand parents may be hesitant, but what a great way to ensure that the kids are safe being in school, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's one more, one more layer to all of the.
One more layer to make parents feel comfortable to have their kids being in school. So hopefully, you know, as we go through, as we start doing this, more people will, just so we can get back to a, I guess, a new normal, which is what everyone is calling it. So, but I do appreciate you guys doing the testing. I think it's a great added to have, you know, to have the option to do it. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. Next is Shawna Shea.
Hey, just two things. Thanks for, you know, putting this complicated process together and implementing it. I know you folks talked about it way back, I think even in August, about shooting towards this goal, and so continuing to make it happen and have that vision is tremendous, so thanks. I also thank you for the, putting the sports testing in place. I think it's really important with these sports in particular, you know, to have that in place. The only question I have is, are, are the corresponding towns or the pod towns in the sports also testing? I mean, I know we can't, it's probably a town-by-town decision, but are the other towns that we're playing sports with testing too?
I'm not sure who's in our pod for Fall Two, so I apologize for that. But I know that some of the towns around us that have been in our pods are starting to screen staff. They're, they're like a few months behind us, so I'm hoping that they catch up with the, some are adopting the DESI screening and, you know, trying it that way. So I'm not sure about who's in our pod to start with. But some towns, but not a lot, are at the level where we are doing students or requiring it of athletes. The requirement is also for extracurricular, in-person extracurricular activities also, not just athletics.
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
Mary Ellen, thank you so much for everything that you've done, giving us these monthly updates. And I think we're also well-educated. I think even back in August when we were doing the phasing into the reopening of schools, we never even talked about pool testing, and now we're talking about pool testing. We all understand it. And thank you very much for, to you and your staff and to Greg and the administration for everything they're doing to keep us updated and, you know, relaying people to watch this tonight and educating everybody as we go through this process. So thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts.
I think we need to, we can't forget our medical advisory team, who has volunteered countless hours to get us where we are today.
Yep, it's like we have our own little fachi here in Northborough-Southborough.
You do.
Okay, thank you very much.
So through the chair, just one comment too, that Principal Bevan in his principal's report will talk about some of the work that he's doing at Algonquin to think about increasing in-person learning. That will be shared during his principal's report.
Okay, thank you. As we progress through the agenda, the next on new business is the CASL program, and I'd like to thank Shawna Shea for bringing this to our attention and asking that we get an update. I think, Sean, it's finally on our agenda for tonight, where you've been asking since probably late fall. So I look forward to hearing about the CASL program, which is collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning.
Sure, so thank you. So just a quick update, the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning is one of those trusted sources for knowledge about high-quality, evidence-based social-emotional learning. And it really is an organization that supports educators and policy leaders, and really enhances the experiences and outcomes for our students. And we're very fortunate to have a very talented team at Algonquin leading this work. And this evening, we have Dr. Lipton, who's here to provide an update, and I will have, give a more formal introduction.
Yes, Greg, can you provide me with sharing capabilities?
I think I already have. Can you just?
Okay, here we go. So yes, thank you, Greg, and thank you to everyone on the committee for, for welcoming us this, this evening. So Dr. Lipton O'Connor is going to give us a bit of an overview here. To be clear, we, we don't employ CASL as a specific framework, but we do many different things to support the social-emotional health of our students. And so Jen Lipton O'Connor is going to talk us through those things. And, and as we do, I think what you'll notice is that, that the, the support of our students' social-emotional health really is a school-wide effort. It's not the, the purview of one department or one individual. Even though Jen is reporting out, I, she's going to talk, talk through some of the methods and, and strategies we employ, but really it's, it requires the, the work of all of the members of our staff, from, from teachers to members of every other department as well. So I'm going to kick it over to Jen, who's going to talk us through some of those items.
Thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to everybody tonight. Luckily, as a school, we've already had a lot of programming in place prior to the pandemic. So I think many of us would agree that social and emotional supports are more important now than ever. And luckily, you know, we've already had a lot of programming in place, and it's laid the foundation that we've been built on for this unique year that we're in right now. So some of the areas that we're focusing on include creating those connections with our students. You know, I think if you ask any teacher or staff member, that's their first priority, right? We spend a lot of time, the first few months of school, we're really spent trying to create those communities, those classroom communities, which is really hard to do when you're wearing masks, you're six feet apart, you can't do group work. Some kids are virtual, some teachers are virtual, so it's posed a lot of challenges. But teachers have been really creative in their ways to create those connections with students. And connected to that is fostering those positive peer relationships, which we know a lot of students are feeling isolated right now. There's not been as many opportunities for those activities. Students aren't able to get part-time jobs or participate in sports or see their friends as much. So it's great that things are sort of starting to open more, but we've been working creatively to try to build those relationships within the school day. And I think one of our big goals is really just creating that sense of a safe, normal school day, whatever that school day looks like, whether you're a SARP student or a hybrid student, and just creating that structure and predictability and sense of normalcy that I think we all need right now. So that's been a priority this year. This year has been hard for parents to access certain providers outside of school. So we've been working really hard to can, help connect parents with agencies, with different providers in the community. And of course, a lot of providers aren't actually providing services right now, or those services might look different. So we've spent a lot of time trying to work together with other agencies. And one of the things that we also have been looking at this year differently is really trying to identify those at-risk students and families. So we use a variety of data, things like obviously grades and attendance, things like that, to really try to identify students early before an issue becomes, you know, more significant. things like that to really try to identify students early before an issue becomes, you know, more significant. And I think that's really where those classroom teachers play such a key role because they're the ones that are there every day. They see the students. They know if there's a change in the student's affect or performance or attendance, they're gonna flag that and come to me or come to an administrator. And then really trying to look at our practices, just in general, how can we minimize that stress that students are feeling? Okay, go next slide. Okay. So some of the programming has included, you know, the guidance department. I know Lisa Connery has presented here multiple times. That they do wonderful work supporting students. They have lots of great workshops. They have been doing virtually this year. We also have the Access Program that is designed to support students who've been out of school for an extended period of time, and it helps them transition back to school in a way that works for that student. We also have school-based counseling, which we do virtually, we do in-person, we do whatever works for the student. We have social groups. And then if there's more, a more significant need that rises to the level of a disability, we also have supports through 504s and special education. Next slide. Okay. So some of the staff, so as as Sean said, this is not like one or two people work on this, right? This is like something we do all day, every day. I think most teachers, you know, at coming back from the break, how was your break? What did you do? Hopefully you didn't travel. Um, you know, what, let's make those connections. Like, let's revisit what's going on. We just had the semester change. So students have new teachers. So I know, you know, teachers are working really hard to build those communities, make those connections with their students. But then we do have some staff who are really dedicated to these issues. So we have, of course, our guidance staff, we have myself and a part-time school psychologist. We have four adjustment counselors and then three tutors. And I do want to say the nurses, too, I should have added on there because despite all they're doing with COVID, they're a big part of our social-emotional support in the building.
That is true, yep.
Okay, so, you know, these areas of continued work, even if it wasn't a pandemic, these are things that we're always working on. Um, of course, now everything just feels more urgent. It feels harder and more important. But, you know, just creating that positive learning environment, building those connections, especially with the students in the various models, really looking at how our practices are impacting students, you know, what, what are some things that we, that are causing stress for students that we can maybe alleviate some of that stress for them? And really, you know, this is always something we want to teach high school students, but really, what better time than a pandemic to really look at that, you know, resiliency, growth mindset, self-advocacy skills. Those are things that we really want to work on. And then, of course, you know, as I've said, really working with families to help identify other providers as needed. And of course, we are always working on substance abuse and education. And Dr. Medina would be happy because we always work on things like, you know, healthy um, habits, like sleep, eating, exercise, good diet, thinking about managing your screen time, your use of social media. Those kind of things are always part of the work we're doing.
And then I would add, uh, uh, what we're also doing on the squ- uh, from the academic side is to look at our assessment practices to ensure that the practices we're employing to the degree that we can are acknowledging that kids are in a different environment this year and that we're trying our best to ensure that uh, that they're having an engaging, exciting in-person and school experience that's not spent all, always testing. And and that requires a whole different mindset and a big shift in in thinking for how uh, how we come at that. And I'll talk more about that in my principal's report shortly. Uh, but that part, that is driven really by our our interest in supporting students' social-emotional health.
I didn't want to steal your thunder on that, Sean.
Yeah, I know that.
That is a big part of it. That is really important work we did this week as well.
Yeah, and uh, Dr. Lipton O'Connor has been part of the uh, the school-based leadership team that developed that professional development session. And really, it was driven by what the feedback we were getting from kids and and their need for for a little bit of help on the social-emotional side. So uh, so Jen did a great job of uh, helping to develop that program and and it was part of just a larger effort that has many different facets that she just outlined. Yeah. Jen, thank you very much. Um, and.
Sorry, that wasn't that brief, but thank you all for the opportunity to to share this information. All the staff here are are working really hard to support the students' emotional needs.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Lipton, for this wonderful presentation. And uh, and what you do for all the students up there. It's, and I didn't even realize this program was available. And just going over this is, and I applaud Sean uh, O'Shea for letting us know about this. So thank you very much. And I see that Sean O'Shea has a question.
Well, since I did ask for it, I I I I should say something. Um, uh, no, thank you very much. That was um, it it's good to know all the different parts of the school and and actually see like how many counselors and adjustment counselors and and uh, there are in, you know, particularly in the night like tonight when we're talking about supporting the budget and those type of decisions, but and and then how that drills down to student, um, you know, their emotional state. I I just, I think this is, it's important for us as, you know, or at least me to be reminded, because we throw out social-emotional learning all the time, SEL, you know, so you know, i- it's important, I think, to be reminded or get a common sense for the committee of what that is and what's taking place because it's just becoming more and more, you know, when we're talking about self-management, self-awareness and and uh, relationship skills and so on, and how that is in the school. And then for us as a committee to be thinking about as you progress as as a school about how we can support that. Um, you know, either through policy or budget in the future. So thank you for giving us that presentation and and um, and explaining, you know, all the different supports and ways it's being integrated into the school.
Thanks, Sean. And I will echo the same comments of Sean because I think that it's wonderful to have their program already in place, the Castle Program. And because I think all of us can read any educational journal or articles and even um, listening on TV about the social-emotional uh, well-being of students as they're going through this because they're going through things that they've never even witnessed or what we ever thought they would go through at this time. So thank you for being there in the forefront and Ashley being right there when we needed you. So thanks to all of your staff, uh, Dr. Lipton, and we really appreciate it. And we have two other comments. We have Kathleen Holland and then Paul Desmond.
Thank you for this presentation, and I would agree um, with with the others that this is such an important piece. I just wanted to ask, do you feel that you have all the staff that you need to meet all the needs, which are vastly different than um, last year?
I mean, I'm not gonna say we have enough staff because I think there's always a need for more staff. I think, you know, we were, we're managing. I think that it would be nice to have additional staff, of course, given the needs. Um, you know, I've certainly talked to to Sean and Marie Allen about that. Um, if that's something that's on the table in the budget, I think it would be definitely a need that we, you know, we have. Um, you know, I think there's a lot of counseling needs that that we have. Having one full-time psychologist is uh, you know, a little lower than what our National Association recommends. Um, it would recommend two full-time school psychologists for a building this size. Um, so I think if that's something on the table for the budget, I think we could definitely use the additional staffing, absolutely.
Well, I would agree with everybody that there's no um, leadership or um, educational uh, curriculum that would ever suggest that this shouldn't be anything but highly prioritized. And so if you feel that you need and would benefit from more staffing, then I think that's something that we must keep in mind on our end. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Paul Desmond?
Hi, thank you. Yes, thank you for that presentation. It was very informative. I'm not familiar with the term adjustment counselor. Can you just explain what those folks do?
Sure, yes. Um, they are um, licensed through the Department of Education in adjustment counseling. So sometimes they're social workers. They might be a licensed mental health worker. Um, they're counselors. So they do counseling for students um, in this, during the school day. It's often around, you know, issues of anxiety, social issues, things that are really impacting the students during the school day. So that's their role. So, you know, some of the adjustment counselors are seeing fifty to sixty students on their caseloads. And that's just the students they normally see. Then we often have, you know, crises come up in a high school. That happens occasionally. And, you know, the adjustment counselors, myself, guidance counselors, we all sort of manage when there's sort of a crisis involved. So that's what the adjustment counselors are here for. They're really talented um, individuals and they're really, they do amazing work with the students.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, Kathleen Holland?
I have a follow-up question, my dear. Fifty to sixty on each caseload, that made my jaw drop. Can you say what the recommendation is for a caseload for a position like that from a National Association standpoint?
That I would have to look up because I'm not an adjustment counselor. I'm familiar with the school psychology recommendations. Um, I can definitely look that up and and share that with the committee.
I have eighty students a week and I, they all have individual needs, but I see them en masse. Fifty to sixty is a remarkable number for one-on-one work and to keep track of everybody. So that concerns me. Thank you.
And I I'm gonna let Marie Allen also speak, too, because they are under this, a lot of the work they do is under the Special Education Department.
Right, and they, and um, you know, the the caseloads are uh, more like thirty to, the the regular students that they see on a regular basis doesn't come close to fifty students a week. Uh, it's more like, like twenty, twenty-five. So uh, their caseloads are definitely within the range of other school districts and other school departments. So uh, like Jennifer said, there is, there are school, our school adjustment counselors, our social workers, mental health providers, and there is no state recommendation about a caseload, but we are well within reasonable compared to our other towns.
That's modestly um, comforting, but I thank you, Marie. Um, you know, looking at the particulars of a student's well-being, you know, can be more, can be very subtle, of course, and that's what gives me concern when that can't be followed closely.
You also have to remember, we have guidance counselors in addition to our school adjustment counselors. So we have, I think it's eight or nine, um, eight, eight guidance counselors as well, who also work with students on their social-emotional well-being. So it's not just school adjustment counselors. The school adjustment counselors handle the more uh, intense cases.
I, it's sort of like a layered approach, I see it as. You know, there's different layers. The guidance counselors are are, you know, kind of the first layer, and then as the need increases, the support will increase.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Chris Covino?
Thanks, Joan. Uh, Marie, I just have a very, very brief question. Are we able to meet with the numbers that we have in terms of the school psychologists and the adjustment counselors? Are we able to meet all of the needs required by the IEPs and 504s of the students in our care?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. Uh, the service delivery is one thing we always pay attention to, and the service delivery is factored into the budget every single year. And right now, we are servicing every one of our students according to their service delivery needs. But as Jennifer said, sure, it would be nice to have an additional um, school psychologist to help for the additional. Jennifer spends a lot of time testing students and evaluating students as well. Part of that time could be used to uh, to be in therapy with, to to counsel students and counsel staff, more importantly. Uh, her role, she does a lot of that as well, and she does a really nice job doing that, too. She she consults with our RISE therapeutic program. And she also uh, consults with our um, our Castle Program and our TLC programs on the social-emotional needs of our students. So uh, it's a balance, but we are meeting service delivery minutes.
Great, thank you.
And I I want to say, I think we are lucky in our building. We have a lot of talented staff. But when you're, when you ask me if we need more, I'm always gonna say yes, right?
Through the chair, if I get to make a, make a couple of comments. Um, so first, I wanted to thank Dr. Lipton O'Connor. Um, actually, the science department is working on cloning her, so hopefully we'll be successful and we'll have multiple um, other people such as her at Algonquin. Um, we've also in the past, and Marie can speak to this, we have contracted out for psychological services in terms of some of the the testing that needs to take place. So we've tried to maximize um, Jennifer's expertise, working with students directly and 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 have tried to take some of that testing load off of her. So that is one way we've tried to maximize supports. And then I'll also um, just say that, you know, I think we're we're very fortunate in terms of it is a team effort. It's not just our guidance counselors. It's not just our adjustment counselors and our school psychologists. It's every teacher making connections with students. And I also just want to applaud the high school. I think the last presentation in January, um, we, we looked at survey data that talked about how can we increase those extracurricular activities where kids are following those passions and making those connections and having additional time with adults. Um, and they've done a nice job increasing those experiences for students. So just want to applaud the high school and uh, Dr. Lipton O'Connor and and just thank her for her work at the high school.
Thank you all. Thanks for all the support the committee has given us. We appreciate it.
It's a great way, great way.
Thank you, Jennifer.
A great way to end um, this presentation and this, and bring in updating the committee. Dr. Lipton, I just have one question, and that is, is there any other staff members that are on the screen tonight that you could introduce to us that are in the Castle Program, or you, is it just you yourself presenting tonight?
I'm just the only one presenting on behalf of, I think, the, you know, the entire school, really.
Okay.
The work we're all doing.
Well, when you work, go back into uh, ARHS tomorrow, please thank all your staff members. Uh, we're, we were just so pleased with everything that you're doing along with Maria Allen. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. And the guy, and the guidance counselors. It's a community effort on this, but thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, uh, under New Business is Student Support Services Update.
Sure. So this evening, we have Marie Allen, our Director of Student Support Services, and Kate Clark, our Assistant Director of Student Support Services, who'll provide a um, update on some of the programming that is happening at Algonquin.
Hey, thank you very much and good evening, everyone. Uh, we all acknowledge in student support that this has been a very challenging and unprecedented time for learning, and it is for our students and it is for all students. Keeping this in mind, uh, I'd like to highlight some of the positives in our daily work with our students and families. We have Kate Clark here, like Greg just mentioned, uh, who is phenomenal, and I'm so happy to have her at the high school, and she really is a leader and has done a tremendous job in the efforts of pulling together all of the work that needs to be done during th- these times last year, starting last year into this year. Uh, she also works very closely with Jennifer Lipton O'Connor, who you met tonight, uh, who also functions as a team chair at some of our meetings. And together, they, they work to support our students. And uh, she's also available for questions after this and during. And Kate, if I leave anything out, just chime in.
You're good. Thanks.
So I'd also like to thank Sean for his support of our students and programs. It's so nice um, to welcome you this year to Algonquin and to know that you're there for our students. And anytime we have a need, you're, you're there to support us. And I'd also like to thank the central office team because working collaboratively to put all of these structures in place to support our students is quite an effort. There's transportation, there's classroom space, technology, health and safety protocols, and staffing shifts to support all of our learning models. So a lot of work goes into uh, the daily, the daily grind, I should say. Um, to give you some perspective, we currently have six sub-separate programs at the high school and six learning centers to support our students. In those sub-separate programs, they are, they have been created as uh, in response to a continuum of services that we've built from elementary to middle and now to the high school. So we have our RISE therapeutic program. We have two therapeutic learning programs, or and they're called TLCs. We have our CAP program, which is our program for our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-olds. We have our language-based learning disabilities program, and we have our New England Center for Children's Partnership Program. And they all operate out of the high school. In addition to that, uh, going into the mix, before I talk about our successes, I know that uh, people have asked numbers in the past about students that are in our current programming. So at Algonquin, we currently have two hundred and one special education students. The number of students in our standalone remote program is twenty-one. Uh, our total number of program students in SARP, so the, the six programs that I just mentioned, out of those, eight of those students out of the twenty-one are from those sub-separate programs. And then we have our four-day cohort, which has forty-eight students, and that is a, a work in progress because as the needs continue and, and students are brought forward, we do add students to the four-day in-person program based on need and based on data. And then we also have our four-point-five-day program. So it's, it's Tuesday through Friday and then a half day on Mondays, and we have thirteen students in that program. So, uh, some of the successes that, uh, we've experienced this year is our families. We, we are working hard with families to support our students both at home and in school. Families have been just great. They, they are just, uh, they're flexible, they're supportive, they're very communicative. Uh, we also have NSPAC, who is a great source of information and a, a great collaborative partner. And, uh, they are an additional source to keep us connected to our families. Sometimes our parent community prefers to maybe run something by our North Borough, South Borough PAC before, uh, bringing it forward, and they're there to help them through, and they, they call us all the time to, to ask for help. Uh, we also have a meeting tomorrow. We have a monthly meeting with them to, uh, to get updates and to, to go through the issues that they encounter from parents. Um, we have received positive feedback from both NSPAC and from our parents after they attend team meetings and because they're thankful for the support from our educators. Uh, they are educators and related service providers, are meeting every challenge and finding creative ways to meet the needs of their students. You've heard from Jennifer Lipton O'Connor, how it's a collaborative effort between guidance and our school adjustment counselors and our teachers. Um, some of our, some of our students are live streaming and in small groups at the same time with a teacher, and the teachers have made that happen. Uh, of course, there's, there's ESPs or aid support in there as well during that time. Um, our ESPs have gone above and beyond, and they're so flexible this year because there is a need for shifts in student support because of different teachers being out or different students being out, and, uh, they're, they're just been very flexible and open, and Kate's on top of it. Uh, we continue to maximize in-person learning, as I had talked about before, um, between our cohorts. We have our hybrid students, our A and B students. If they need to come in for the four days, we do consider that. I believe all of our EL students are in four days a week as well. So, uh, Kate just gave me a thumbs up, so. Uh, we, our social time, student social time is so very important, and they need to be connected, and we're finding creative ways to gather our students. So we have best buddies, our program, that is, uh, managed by Caitlin Hines and, um, Kevin Hausman, and they have virtual Zoom meetings as well as in-person best buddies. So, uh, that's one way for the, the students to socialize. For our CAP students, who are our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old students, and they are the ones who go out in the community, and we try and provide as many vocational services as we possibly can for them in the community. Given COVID, it was a little bit limited, but it's starting to pick up again. We have work sites at the food pantry right now, Special Olympics, and at Finn School. They practice vocational skills at school. Uh, some of them are participating in the daily grind, which is a build, uh, which is a building-based business, and the students in that program do deliveries for that, uh, for the daily grind. Um, educators are constantly working collaboratively about creative ideas for new job experiences, and Kate informed me that, uh, they're in the process of setting up a receptionist position in the student support services office, and students will be working, uh, on that piece of it, and, uh, they're working on the redesign of the conference room in order to provide that service. Uh, for, for some of our students, as you can imagine, the, the students that have high anxiety, this hybrid learning model and the, the SARP model are actually working better and decreasing some of the social anxieties relative to school. Uh, and some of those students have really thrived in this model, and they attend more regularly. They keep up with their assignments. Um, the model, this model of learning has given us some flexibility and an alternative opportunity for our students to learn going forward. So it won't go away, and for, for some of our students, we can be flexible about their learning model. Um, we, obviously, we have some challenges, uh, but the challenges are less than the successes. We have, uh, running various schedules simultaneously, as I had spoken about, where, uh, we're, we have a remote schedule, where some are in person, and then we have to, we're creatively providing live streaming and then the small groups within the same setting with the proper number of staff. And, uh, and that can be a little challenging at times. And then also, uh, shifting staff, uh, according to whatever the week presents or the day presents, uh, is something that we have to keep on top of. So we continue to meet the challenges of the changing landscape, uh, for learning, and we're much more prepared for these challenges going forward. If, uh, we can entertain any questions, Kate and I are here to answer them.
Thank you, Marie, for the, uh, presentation tonight and, and especially for supplying all the numbers to us. And I guess I'd be probably could ask you the same question. Do you have enough staff at this time? And I would guess, I guess the answer would probably be, we could always use more staff, correct?
But, but as I had said before, we are meeting service delivery grid minutes with the resources we have. We do have the staff necessary to provide the services for our students. And we continue to look at it. If we have, if we have a move-in, i- if we have things that happen towards, towards, as the year progresses, then we look at that again, and we do add an ESP or we would add a staff member to make sure that we meet those service delivery minutes.
Okay. I guess a concern of mine is a, as an educator, is I know how valuable it is when you have in-person team chair meet, team meetings, and you invite the parents, then could you just tell us, how is that going during this COVID time? How are you making sure parents are updated? I know you can do it through the email, but sometimes just talking to a person, you know, back and forth in person is always beneficial. So how is that going with those team meetings?
So the team meetings are mostly virtual right now. Uh, there are some parents where we've invited in that can have conferences if they want to. Uh, but that, but Kate, I'm not really sure many parents have taken advantage of that. They kind of like the virtual meetings.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, there's always that human connection that, uh, you know, it's, it's a lot easier to read the room when you're, when you're together and you're around a conference table, and, you know, I'm one that sits in a lot of meetings. I certainly do miss that at times, but, um, I think we know our families well. I think we try to, um, connect with them ahead of time, and I think our families have like, have like the, um, flexibility around, um, the virtual meeting. It reduces travel time if it's in the middle of their workday. You know, there's, there's lots of pros and cons, I think, for each. Um, I think, you know, I don't have hard data on this, so I, I apologize, but I, I think our attendance for virtual meetings has actually been a little bit better than maybe some of our attendance for, um, in-person meetings because I think it is more convenient, especially for, um, when we're talking about older students who also have to attend their IEP meeting. They just jump on from their class or, you know, from one of our conference rooms, and then they go right back to class. And so, um, you know, there's pros and cons for either format, but so far, I think it's going okay.
But if, also, if parents request an in-person meeting, they can provide that. So we, we do tell them when, when they're invited to an, a virtual meeting that they are welcome to do the in-person at this time. They couldn't in the very beginning, like last year, they couldn't do it, obviously. But this year, we have offered that as, uh, as an alternative. And, uh, yeah.
I would just add, Marie, as well, that, uh, like Kate, I don't have hard data on this. I've attended a few, uh, uh, team meetings just to observe how they're going, and, uh, I've seen, uh, meetings where we've had translators attend, and I have to imagine that getting a translator to attend virtually is a very, is much easier than to have that happen, um, in person. And so we've seen the benefits of Zoom meetings, which, you know, there are, there are certainly downsides to it, but I think we are observing some of the benefits, and I think for our ELL students, uh, that's one of the, one of the benefits.
Yeah, I could see some of the benefits, benefits from the, um, from the Zoom meetings on these, especially when you have two parents that, some parents may be working and they can just do it virtually from home and instead of coming in, or if somebody is traveling, that they can still take part of this as a parent and, uh, of the meeting. I had a question, my last question is on that standalone remote. You said that there were twenty-one students. Are those twenty-one, are they clustered together with it, with, with staff members? Or how does, how does that standalone remote work?
I can answer that if, if you want. Is that okay, Marie?
That's true.
I'm sure. So the twenty-one stu-, um, students who are special education students, um, in our standalone remote program, we basically build individual schedules for them in the sense of, um, they still need their services regardless of their status. So, um, that's why, uh, we highlighted in the numbers that there are a certain number of those twenty-one students who are actually members of some of our intensive programs, and those students still need their program needs. So they will stay with their needs and their program teachers, and they'll be streaming in. Um, and the other students who maybe need a learning center or some inclusion support, they have a regular standalone remote schedule as anyone else. They'll still receive inclusion services, they'll still receive a learning center, um, and they stream continually, too. Um, all of our special education teachers and, and all the programs and all the learning centers stream. Like, they all have students who they stream with every day. Because even if they have cohort A and B students, there's, um, two days a week where they're home, and so they have to still continue to provide learning center services and things like that regardless of their status. So, um, they have been phenomenal, our staff, in trying to make this all work and having sometimes a whole, one section of students, um, in front of you who are some are streamers and some are in person and some are four days. Uh, but they, they manage and they've been phenomenal at doing so. So our standalone remote students get whatever schedule that they need. Um, and we make the schedule work for what their unique needs.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, and thank you very much, Marie Allen and Kate, for this presentation tonight, and give our thanks to all of your support staff, everybody that helps and, and works with these students on a daily basis. Thank you very much. We have a comment from, uh, question from Paul Bucka.
Thank you, Joan, and, and thanks for the presentation. Uh, I, I too have a question about some of the numbers that, that you talked about earlier, Marie. So we've got like, if, if I heard it right, there's about sixty students out of two hundred that go either four or five days a week. I'm just kinda curious, who, how did, how did that call get made? As to whether our students are, you know, two days, you know, the, the kind of the standard hybrid schedule that, that everyone else is on versus the four-day versus the five?
That is based on service delivery minutes and, and the percent of time they're receiving services in, uh, in special education. So all of our students that receive services, seventy-five percent or more in special education, received the four-point-five days. Uh, the students that, that the next wave was the students that had, I believe it was forty percent to seventy-five percent, where they came in four days, and they were given letters. All parents received the letters ahead of time. They had liaisons calling them, so they were all aware of what bucket they fell into. And then anyone, uh, that's receiving, uh, less than forty percent received the hybrid or the two-day model. Now, there's also outliers within those models because some students, regardless of the amount of service, if their mental health or anxiety warranted that they came in more, we did more. So it was, uh, we, we first did that first wave pass, and then we took it individualized, and then Kate worked with her teams to bring in more students.
And, and just if, if I could, like, a follow-up, uh, you know, one of the things we heard, uh, at our last meeting from, um, from one of the, the presenters and from, uh, from Principal Bevan was that they felt that, um, despite the hybrid model, you know, uh, students were getting, were not falling behind where we expected them to be in, in what they're learning in the various subjects as they, as they progress through the year. You, you have the same level of confidence with your students?
Yes, because as Kate mentioned, the two-day mo-, even though they're in a two-day hybrid, they're still working with their learning center teachers on the other two days. So, uh, the other, some students who are just working asynchronously on those days, our students are actually working with their teachers, uh, their learning center teachers, especially teachers during the other two days.
True. That's good news. Thanks.
Okay, great. Oh, Dan Kalenda has a question, comment?
Thank you, Joan. Yeah, and, and Paul, I, I hope that is the case. Um, um, you know, my experience, uh, with some, uh, students that I know quite well in, in South Borough is, is not that way at all. I mean, kids are not, uh, fully engaged, uh, four or five days, um, of school. Uh, you know, this, the hybrid model, we, we're all doing what we have to do. I, you know, I, I sure hope what I just heard is, is the vast majority of our students that are getting that much out of this hybrid model. Um, because the experience that I'm seeing is definitely not even close to that. And, um, anyway, it, it, it's just another, uh, at least for me, anyway, um, you know, uh, uh, you know, demonstrates the need to get our kids back to school as soon as we can and as safely as, as we can. Not just, of course, in the elementary schools, but these high school kids need to be back in. I feel like they're actually losing, uh, you know, uh, we lost a lot last year, but we're losing a lot again this year. So we, anyway, I sure hope what I just heard is actually happening with the vast majority of students. I haven't yet.
Uh, and, and I would say, Dan, if you know of parents that have those feelings, they should be contacting their liaisons so that we can work that through. We have not received that, that feedback.
Uh, I, I am guessing that the, there are lots of parents that just understand that this is the model that everyone is subject to right now. Um, I have not heard, and I, I, I do visit with a lot of parents, um, uh, you know, and the, again, the, this, this, this model isn't as, as, you know, as perfect as everyone would like it to be. And, uh, you know, our kids are losing every day that they're not in the classroom, uh, with others in front of teachers, uh, are losing a lot. We're doing the best we can with Zoom, but I'm telling you that, that this is, this is having a dramatic and negative effect on many kids in front of a screen. And, you know, the more that we can do to help get them back safely into schools as soon as we can, the better. I'd be, I'll encourage people to reach out, um, to their liaisons, but I, I, I will doubt it.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's good to know, and I, and I totally agree with you that our goal is to get students back in front of teachers and learning as soon as possible. So I, I would, I would have to agree with you that that is the best way for students to learn, for most students to learn.
Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Uh, Paul Bucka?
Yeah, thanks again, Joan. Yeah, so on the same topic, Dan, and I, and I, I, I share your concern. Um, and, and, you know, it, it came up, came up a couple of different times in last month's meeting with the science department presentation and, and then with the principals' report. And, uh, we were led to believe, I guess, is, is, you know, told, informed that the materials are in fact all being covered. Maybe not to the, and Sean, jump in and correct me if, if I'm saying this wrong. Maybe not to the extent that they're traditionally covered in the past where, you know, maybe a concept or a, a principle of learning of some kind is, is emphasized a, a second, a third, a fourth time, but that it's, it's being covered the first time and probably covered the second time, but maybe not, you know, not with the amount of repetition or depth as has been traditionally the case, but that the, 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 the heads of the departments felt, uh, at least I thought that's what I heard, and, and I kinda made a point of exploring that. The heads of the departments felt that the students were not falling behind in the hybrid model. And, and that was my question again with Marie, and, and, and what I'm, what I'm hoping is in fact the case, and maybe what, what you are.
Yeah, Paul, you, okay, yeah, sorry, I'm, don't mean to interrupt. No, your, your memory is accurate, uh, and I will just acknowledge the obvious. Uh, we would not choose the hybrid model given, except that we're in. Uh except that we're in a a period of time where we need to do so uh to meet the needs of students during the pandemic. Um certainly, students are not getting the the great depth of understanding that they uh they might get and or they should be achieving in a regular year. Um but the departments have uh have done a good job of try, uh the department heads and their teachers have identified the critical standards that they need to. To address and to to hit those standards and to your point, Mr. Bucka, they maybe not, have not been able to get to those in multiple times and ways. And as I presented in my last presentation and they might, that they might not have been presenting those in ways that were as engaging or as fun. As they might have been in other, other years, so for example, a project that might be a group work assignment that might uh might take a a week, a week's worth of. Time and effort and be really enjoyable, enjoyable and memorable for students in previous years, might be covered in a remote fashion, not in group work. Um but hit those same standards and have the students come away with um the same understanding, but perhaps not the the great depth. And also not at the same level of enjoyment or engagement, so uh there are certain, you know, I, there are things that had to give here and that's, that's for sure. Um and I do understand that uh our families would love for kids to be back as much as possible and it's really been enjoyable to see that kids want to be back. Um seeing that they, i- it's just an indicator to me that they like their school, they like seeing each other, they like seeing their teachers. And to the degree that we can do that and as soon as we can do that safely, we're we're going to. So I think, I think everybody's right here that that we're not hitting all the same levels of depth that we would in an ordinary year. But we are hitting the the anchor standards we we aim to to hit every year, but perhaps not at the same depth as we would in an ordinary year.
Paul, do you have a follow up or any to that?
No, I'm also, I I just, I kind of wanted to, you know, reiterate what I had heard at the last meeting and in fact, as you know Joan, I actually am the. You know, made a point of making sure that the minutes were amended to reflect it because I think it's an important topic.
And and those minutes were passed with that amendment, so thank you Paul.
Yeah, I'm sorry I was late.
That's okay, we did it, we did it, uh next up is Dan Kalenda and Kathleen Holland.
Thank you, just a very quick follow up and Sean, I I could not agree with you more, I think your comments are exactly on, I know everyone is doing the best they can in this environment. But for anyone who are, you know, on this call, who's listening to this call, who has taught students before in a live environment. There is no substitute for that and we shouldn't uh presume that there is. When when, you know, I I have taught, I um i- in many instances, I am right now doing in in my, in my own company, I'm doing. Uh presentations via Zoom, uh you do not get and we do not, while we can provide the material. Uh you do not get the level of input uh with it that you would get, or the number of questions that you would get when you're standing right there in front of the audience. Um you know, when you're on a Zoom, it's very easy and you hope that the messages are being uh received, you're surely delivering them. And 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 our teachers are delivering them, but uh we shouldn't fool ourselves to think that this model is. Um you know, the the that that things are being received and that that there is the back and forth. That will happen in a, you know, in a, in a, in an in-person environment. So anyway, I know, we 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 probably talked a lot about this and and it just, when I heard that 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 there was. You know, a a belief that uh the the same level of uh education was happening in the hybrid model. I I don't know if it was perfectly meant like that, but there is demonstrable evidence against that. And again, I just, we're doing the best we can, let's get our kids back to school safely as soon as we can and get them in front of teachers where they can have that. Valuable back and forth that uh I am confident is not happening uh as much in a Zoom environment.
Okay, thank you Dan, Kathleen Holland?
Thank you Joan, um I would uh hearten to hear uh and have Paul remind us of what the science group said last time, which I found. Very important and worth uh hearing again for sure over and over. This is the inelegant um project that no IRB would have ever allowed for. Um this is the unheralded experiment um that we are currently in. And I think um a- as leaders in the community, we have to be looking at the research that will come from this, not the anecdotes. And I know that the research that's come out of the last decade, decade and a half, really showed that the American learning system is a lot like goose pate. I don't know if you know how goose pate is made, but they open up the the beak and they shove a pipe down and they continue to shove material. Into the liver, um and that's how goose pate is made. Um it has created an environment of cheating, it's created an environment of high stress. And if the learning is backed off to some degree of depth, but still covers breadth. If the teams are able to gather in the way we heard the science team gathering, I think that's great pedagogy. That's a great advantage in this time. Um so I'm a fan of really looking at the research and not just anecdotes. Um I also know that as somebody who teaches on Zoom myself, that my college has allowed me to develop a set of tools. To make that very, very useful, um and the the technology very useful and very appropriate. And in fact, many colleges, including mine, will continue with online learning after this because of the research that they've been doing. And we're only a semester and a half into it, um but this looks to be the future because of what the tools can offer us. And what I tell my students is that we may be physically distant, but there's no reason to be socially distant. And we've created and co-created a classroom that's very, very interactive and supportive. So I know that it can be done, um I'm confident that not only is Algonquin doing its best. But in getting the tools, getting this team meeting happening, but I don't mind that the depth isn't happening because I'd love everybody's livers to be intact. I would love to see a less stressed generation, I would love, I know Paul, it's fun, it's a, it's a. These sort of things are vivid, um but I would like to see a generation that loves to learn, that's curious and passionate. And it isn't just some god awful task that keeps them up at night and sleepless and stressed. I think that perhaps this elegant experiment could bring us to the other side with some real advantages to understanding what modern learning is. And what's necessary in order to be a modern uh person, so thanks.
Thank you, Ca- thank you Kathy, Kathleen, um and I'd like to thank again in closing Marie Allen and Kate Clark. Thank you very much for your presentation tonight and updating us and uh thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity and I just wanted to thank our families for their support and for school committee and all the central office, the team. And uh we just keep do, keep plugging and and trying to make it work for our students, so thank you.
Through the chair, could I just say one, one or two quick comments? I just want to thank Kate Clark and Marie Allen for the leadership they provided uh for the student support services department. Um it's been an extremely challenging year for the department and they've led with great integrity and grace, so I just want to thank them. And then I just want to just, the, in terms of wrapping up the conversation, I think the common ground is that we want our students back in person. Um with high quality education in front of our educators, five days a week, um allowing them to do what they do best and that's connect and engage kids in learning. So I think that is the common ground that we all have and I I can't wait till that happens and and we are working toward that endeavor.
Okay, thank you, going on to our agenda, still under new business, uh is the articulation agreement and this is an agreement with Nichols College. In Dudley, Massachusetts with the regional high school.
Well, this is a a good news story and um as you all know, we have a an amazing business concentration of Algonquin Regional High School and. Uh through the work of Sean and the department chairs, um we have a an exciting new opportunity for s- for students, so I will turn it over to Principal Bevan to provide an overview.
Yes, thank you Greg and thank you Madam Chair, uh and you are right Greg, we have a really wonderful uh program, uh Applied Arts Department and a real business concentration. It's it's um a a a a real uh area of strength for us as a school and one we're very proud of. And so I can't take any credit for this, this is uh Mary Beth Pappas, who's who's our department chair of the Applied Arts Department. Has been pursuing an arrangement with area colleges to have uh some of our high quality business courses be uh be recognized. And be awarded credit for students who who complete them. So in your packet on page, I think fifteen, and I can display if I need to, but it's in your packet. Um students who complete our accounting one and accounting two courses and complete an exam are able to uh be awarded credits through Nichols College. Which I think is in Dudley and uh many thanks to the the folks at Nichols for working with Mary Beth on arranging this. I think it's a reflection of the high quality work that uh Mary Beth has been doing and the members of her department as well. Um and ju- and she's not satisfied with stopping there, she's looking at a striking arrangements with other area colleges uh as well. And so that's uh an exciting um, an 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 exciting uh advancement for that department and for our school.
Uh Mr. Bevan, do we have to take a vote to accept a C on the page that there's many signatures that are needed? From yourself, uh from the accounting department chair, director of student services in Nichols College, is there something that you would request from the regional committee tonight?
I will defer to to Mr. Martino, but I do not think so, I've signed off on my side and uh Mary Beth has signed off, I think we are okay here. I think it's good for the the committee to be aware of it, um but I don't think it requires any official um endorsement.
That is accurate.
Okay.
The will of the committee if they wanted to uh make a symbolic vote, but other than that, it's not required.
How does the board feel upon this? Okay, I don't see anybody, uh Paul Bucka and then Karen Ayers.
So I don't see a need for a vote, but it's certainly uh time to say congrats, that seems like a great idea and and. You know, our our business classes have become more and more and more popular and and you know, to show them continue to stay effective even during this whole. Hybrid model period of time is is terrific news too, so congrats.
Karen Ayers?
Yeah, same, this is uh exactly a great, um sorry kitty in the way. Uh a great opportunity, um love Nichols College, there's plenty of Algonquin graduates that already go there. I know a couple I can count on my hands, so they're already getting credits that they can apply to and and you know, get ahead of the game. Um and I would encourage her and other departments to continue this work and to look at other schools. Um Worcester State, Framingham State, Quinn-Sigman Community College, off, all offer all of these programs, so love it, thanks.
We'll share that along to Ms. Pappas and um and encourage her to continue this work.
Yeah, this is fantastic that our students can do this and prepare just a little bit more for when they go into college, that's great to have some of these credits done and I'm sure the parents appreciate it too.
I'm sure they do.
Definitely, okay, uh and Sean O'Shea?
I was just gonna ask, do those credits transfer, are they able to transfer other colleges too, do you know?
So I don't know the answer to that, uh Sean, I imagine that's um really up to the col- the receiving college on whether or not they would uh honor those credits from Nichols. But I don't know for for sure.
It, it's not just a great uh opportunity, but it's a great financial benefit too, if that's the case.
Okay, thank you, uh Dan Kalenda?
Just very quick, and I don't think we need a vote either, but thi- this is an outstanding program and and I couldn't commend you more for doing it. Um there, when this was originally announced, I am telling you that it was, it was incredibly well received by many students, by many parents. But students that are uh quite business oriented, uh have real interest in in pursuing uh business degrees in college. And to the fact that that our uh high school is going to give them a a leg up on doing that. And allow them to take college level uh courses in in an outstanding high school, well done.
Thank you, Mr. Kalenda, I will share your uh your gratitude with the members of the department.
Uh Karen Ayers, do you have a final comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of re-comment that um. It would be great to expand this to other departments and I guess I just wanted to reemphasize this, not just business, but there are, there are so many other opportunities. For science and ELA and all of those, so that that's all, thanks.
I will make a note of that and I'll see if we can maybe see if there's a a way to expand that, this kind of approach.
Okay, thank you, uh going on to our agenda item, we have now the last one under new business, which is school choice discussion. I'll hand it over to Superintendent Martino.
Who are usually in the month of May, I present a school choice presentation and at the meeting, the committee votes whether to opt out of school choice. So taking a different approach um this year, my intention this evening is to present the information around school choice. To provide an opportunity for discussion at an upcoming meeting in preparation for a public hearing and a vote um of the school committee in May. So again, giving people an opportunity to get information, ask questions, for me to collect any information that would help you make an informed decision. In preparation for a vote um later on in the year, so I have a brief presentation and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. And this is not as exciting as Dr. Lipton O'Connor's presentation, I can promise you that. So um just a little bit about school choice, so the inter-district school choice program under um chapter seventy six twelve B has been in place since um nineteen ninety one. So it has been longstanding and basically the premise is to allow parents or guardians to enroll um his or her children in a school district other than. The district in which the child lives. And the way the law is, is that you have to opt out of school choice if the school committee does not hold a public hearing and vote to opt out. It is presumed that the district is a member of school choice and participates in school choice. So a receiving district can withdraw from school choice only if a school committee holds a public hearing on this issue, which again is typically taken up at the May meeting. Um and votes to withdraw from the school choice program prior to June first. Um school choice, so the the benefit of participating in school choice is that um for every school choice student, uh the district receives five thousand dollars in tuition. But I will uh point out that the FY eighteen per pupil expenditure for North from Southborough Regional School District was. Uh a little over sixteen thousand dollars, so there's quite a difference in the amount of tuition received and the actual cost to educate a student at Algonquin Regional High School. So some, some information about school choice, so the school committees can specify um the schools and grade levels in which seats are available. Um so we can look at specific grades, programs and schools and again, looking at enrollment trends, looking at where there might be um low enrollment in a grade level. There's a lot of flexibility and options from a committee's standpoint. Um and obviously, um you know, school choice, you know, we can't, we, it's by lottery, so um you know, we may not, we can't discriminate. So it's non-discrimination policy um is in effect when when participating in school choice. So if we open up, if we are a school choice district and we um have a certain number of seats. And we have more students interested in those seats than seats available than it is by lottery, so it's a a random lottery. Um and students are selected um again by that lottery. Some just quick advantages and disadvantages, so so a a potential advantage um is that many districts have used school choice as a a means to generate some revenue. Um if you look at Met, if you look at Worcester West, you'll see that many schools participate um in school choice as a matter of survival. Um having to generate that revenue to basically keep the doors open. If you look at neighboring schools, Nassaber Valley Collaborative, very few of our our neighbors um participate in school choice. Um so it allows for districts to um you know, increase enrollment if enrollment is declining. And I think an advantage too is it's not, it's not a one-time decision, it's a year-to-year decision, something the school committee needs to opt out each year. Um and if they do not opt out, it is presumed that district is participating. So the disadvantages, um I'm just listing a few, um again, the Algonquin Regional High School per pupil expenditure is a little over sixteen thousand dollars. And that's quite a difference from the five thousand dollar. And that's quite a difference from the five thousand dollar tuition we receive. Acceptance is by lottery, so that can be an advantage or a disadvantage. But again, once we open up school choice and accept a student, that student is a student of Algonquin Regional High School until he or she graduates through grade twelve. So, you know, again, depending on the needs of the student, whether it's disciplinary, whether it needs, the student needs significant counseling for all intents and purposes. The student is an Algonquin student. We would provide whatever services he or she needed to be successful at Algonquin. And then for me, in thinking of a disadvantage, you know, again, we talked about living this hybrid model. And our goal really is to move as quickly as we can and as safely as we can to increase in person learning to five days a week. And a disadvantage, I would say is, you know, we don't, do not know what the fall will look like. And I'm not sure it's the time to be accepting any additional students because every student counts in terms of the space and making sure we can educate our student population in person learning in the fall. So just in summary, the, this is just informational. There's, there's no need to to make a, take a vote this evening. I'm not making a recommendation. I'm just providing information and also seeking what types of information you'd like me to bring forth at a future meeting so that committee can make an informed decision. And again, the intention is to have the public hearing in May and have the committee formally vote whether to opt out or not to take a vote, which would presume that Algonquin Regional High School would be a choice district. Also, I would share that Principal Bevan and I have not had a chance to really have a deep conversation around, you know, the pros and cons of this from from his perspective, being a principal new to Algonquin. So those conversations do need to take place as well. So at this point in time, I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any commentary.
First up is Paul Becker.
Thank you, Joan. Greg, first off, you know, in the, in my fifteen years or so on this committee, I'd like to, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that it's terrific to have this topic come up a couple of months early as opposed to just showing up on the May agenda and and the committee all walking in cold to have to decide whether we opt in or opt out of the of the program. So, you know, I think that that's terrific that we're doing this. And and there's a lot of food for thought in that, you know, for for us now, particularly as enrollments are declining. I'm curious why you picked FY eighteen as a, as the year that you calculated our cost per student when we're, when we're looking at, what, the FY twenty-two budget tonight or something? As, surely there's more current data. Is the sixteen K per student still pretty much accurate? I, I, I read my calculator. I wasn't sure how you did it. Did?
The FY eighteen, yeah, the FY eighteen data is the most recent data available, so they're quite behind in calculating per pupil expenditure. So, I think it should be FY nineteen because of the pandemic. They haven't released that information yet, but they're a few years behind.
Well, we can't just do it with our current budget. And, you know, I mean, we've got a budget of twenty-four million. We know there are thirteen hundred and fifty kids.
We could. I just took it from the the DOR and DESI website.
So, do they do that calculation pre all the state aid, like the chapter seventy and and the like? Or do they do it afterwards?
Becky, do you want to comment?
Sure. So, there are a number, they take certain categories and they also take certain aids. So that's why it's a little more complicated to calculate according to the DESI calculation what the per pupil student expenditure is. It's actually something that we've been looking at over the past couple of days so that we can try to get to that number from more recent figures.
Okay, so anyway, for the rest of the committee, if I do my math right and and our top line budget before any of the state aid comes in at twenty-four point seven million, and we have thirteen hundred and fifty kids, our cost per pupil is over eighteen thousand dollars a year. Now, it's not all our costs directly in self for taxpayer property value assessments, but the the taxpayers pay for it one way or another, whether it goes through, you know, state taxes and then funnels back or not. It's it's more like an eighteen thousand dollar item. Another question I have, if I could, I don't want to take the floor, but on school choice, I, my impression has been if we took, say we opened it up for, I don't know, sophomores and seniors, that if a kid got selected and had a sibling that also wanted to come into the district, that, are we, is there not kind of a requirement that you that you pick up the siblings regardless of what grade they're going into?
That is accurate. If there is space and if there is a seat, there is preference given to siblings. I think, I just will call to that question too. I think one of the challenges of being, not challenges, but of being three districts, you know, pre K through A, Southborough, Northborough and the region, is that, you know, if if school choice, if we opt out of school choice in Southborough, for example, and there's a sibling who attends school choice at Algonquin, there's no obligation to take a sibling to attend the Southborough Public Schools. So it's a little bit unique in terms of a regional district in our in our setup.
Okay, next I have Paul Desmond and then Chris Covino.
Thanks, Joan. I would imagine that five thousand dollar reimbursement is is out of whack with pretty much any district. And I'm just wondering if you have any idea when the last time that went up was?
I I do not, Paul. I can get that information for you. And I do know that there's been conversations around raising the amount. And I think as part of the Student Opportunity Act, I believe it was supposed to be raised to seven thousand five hundred, which is, you know, a modest increase. But again, I'll I'll do some research and see when the last time it has been increased, but it's been some time.
Okay, actually, that's what I was thinking, given they just looked at all these numbers and maybe there was some possibility it might go up. Thank you.
Chris Covino.
Thanks, Joan. I guess, just as a, as a, as a quick comment here. It is interesting that the school, money associated with school choice tuition is far different from the reimbursement that charter schools receive. So if a district is to send to a charter school, that is a significant difference in cost compared to the money that a a regular public school district would receive from school choice. So that's just a little bit of a side note, just so that the community knows that there is in fact a significant difference between charter school and school choice tuition. I should also say that I work for a school in the Assabett Valley Collaborative that, and I'm a high school teacher, and that we we participate, the school district I work for participates in school choice. And speaking anecdotically, anecdotally about this, I would just, and I've been doing, I've been working for the school district for a very long time. And they've had school choice for the entire time period that I've worked there. I would just caution using, if the, if it's the school committee's choice to do so, I would caution accepting school choice monies to plug holes in budgets because it can build a reliance on that money, which causes a problem when you have fluctuations in student population. Very significant problem when you start to have large increases in the student population. Granted, our projections don't necessarily show that for our school district here. But when the local population increases and you reduce your school choice population, you now have a larger budget gap to plug because you can't just add more seats. So the add more seat solution, trust me, doesn't really work. The other piece that goes along with it, and I guess, Greg, you were asking for what information might be useful to collect. I'm not going to share what I think anecdotally, because anecdotally it doesn't really matter. But I would really be interested if it's even possible to obtain what percentage of students that are randomly selected in a lottery, what percentage of those students relative to the regular population of the school require more services than the regu, than the normal distribution of students in in the school? So for example, perhaps they would receive less services, or perhaps those students would require more services. So I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but if, say, twenty-five percent of, you know, Algonquin's student population requires some level of service, but districts that are sending students in school choice, those students, for whatever reason, require thirty-five percent of those students would require more services. I'd be interested in seeing if those statistics are available. I think that that could be really informative for the school committee. So that's, thank you very much. I appreciate, I definitely appreciate having the discussion before vote. So thank you very much for getting this on the agenda.
A good discussion on this. Greg, is this something that we will put on the agenda for the next two meetings in March? And then March and April before we take the vote in May?
I thought we could bring it back to the April agenda, and I can do some research and see if that that data is available, Chris, and and try to bring it back in April before vote in in May.
Okay, and if anybody else should, between now and April, come up with something that they need, they would like more information, can they contact you or come through the chair? And we would try to get that document for you in April.
Yeah, if there are any questions, if they could go through you, Joan, that'd be great, and be happy to answer any any further questions that people think of.
Okay, great. All right, and I see there are, at this time, there aren't any other questions or comments from board members. So we'll continue on to the agenda, and at this time, we're going to the superintendent's report to the committee. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Martino.
So, Mr. Bevan, I apologize for my high interest topic of school choice that you have to follow me. So, I'm sure your your principal report's going to pale in comparison to my school choice presentation.
It's a tough lead in, Mr. Martino, but I'll do my best. So, if I can, I will share my screen now. So, thank you, everyone. Excuse me, let's do this. Okay. So I'm happy to provide a principal's report on a variety of issues. And I'm going to start with, on this past Monday, my staff and I participated in an in-house professional development program that we developed by school leaders, the department head group, this, which we call the school-based leadership team, developed a PD session entirely on a on assessment and how to reimagine assessment. So just to remind you all, our student data that we we gathered in November and December suggested and was pretty clear that one of the themes that students were were not happy about was that students were taking lots of quizzes and tests on the days when they were in person, which makes sense when you have a teacher who's who's providing instruction and then needs to test students on that instruction. The most secure way to do so would be to do it when you see them. And the result of that, that kind of dynamic playing out over and over again is that students were were spending a lot of time learning remotely in ways that were sometimes live streamed, but often asynchronous, and then coming into days where they had multiple exams or several, three, four, maybe even more. And so what we were, challenged ourselves to do was the department heads first took some time to think, how can they, as, because they all teach their own courses, try out some new and innovative ways of instruction and assessment that would still retain that in-person learning time, which is so valuable and and really at a at a premium and not give it away to assessment at all the time. And so I give them a great deal of of credit for for leading the path and and showing the way. And then they developed a PD session that, which we did on Monday. I have to thank the committee for allowing us to shorten the the school day on Monday for students for in-person learning, for for remote learning, and students ended their day at eleven and teachers went into these sessions. The question that they were, we asked teachers to to consider is how can I assess students' knowledge and skills in innovative and authentic ways that maximize in-person learning time? So one of the, so the sessions that were, they were all delivered by teachers who were already trying out new things. And they're trying them out in ways that might be different from more conventional assessments that we might be used to, or you might be used to seeing your child take home. And so, for example, Dan Walti is one of our our science teachers. He has students creating digital portfolios where they demonstrate their learning through portfolios. Others provided technological platform training on on various platforms that allow for assessments that are a little bit more innovative and maybe a little bit more engaging than a more conventional test or quiz. And I have those listed here. We had a teacher provide a a training on Canvas. Canvas is a student management system that you may be familiar with that does have a lot of, it's it's feature rich and has functions that do allow for for quizzes and discussions that could replace more conventional tests and quizzes. We have a teacher or several using seminars to to gain an understanding of students' learning. And then we have at least one, and this was a session I attended, and that image in the top part of your your screen there is from that session. This is a teacher who is is doing live testing with remote students simultaneous to the students in the in the room and allowing for open notes. So this is a a process that allows for students to all simultaneously test, but then it gives you, you don't, you don't use two days to test the same, one group over the course of two days. And so you gain back a day for in-person instruction. It provides a little bit more flexible thinking, a little bit more trust and some planning and thoughtfulness to make sure students are still gaining the same understanding as they would otherwise. So what we're challenging my teachers to do is to each take an existing exam or test or quiz or some other assessment upcoming and try something new that results in more in-person instruction and more in-person engagement and less in-person, less time spent testing and quizzing in person. The 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 feedback from the teachers was was very strong. They like hearing from each other and seeing what other colleagues are doing and to learn more from each other. And we're going to reinforce those concepts over the course of the next weeks and months so that people continue to try out these new, these new methods. A few just notes, we are, we've recorded each of the sessions so that anybody who maybe only attended one, well, you could only attend one at a time, and we only offered one on Monday, they're going to be able to access those at any time. And we're going to look to try to reinforce the groups that perhaps did the the last one, for for example, to try to link those teachers together so that they can maybe check in on each other and find out how their attempts at open note testing are going and to try to to build this up. Final, my final thoughts on this are that this is, to some degree, a survival. This is to help teachers with with kind of refreshing their their approach after having spent almost a full year in a very unusual educational model and to outfit them with some new strategies that might refresh their approach and energize them if they're having trouble. But also, I think there are long-term benefits for teachers to maybe consider some of these approaches because there are benefits for them in the long term. So if you're a teacher who's giving conventional tests and quizzes and you've not tried open note testing and you're finding in trying it out in this by necessity, maybe you'll find that your your results are similar comparable in in this model and maybe the kind of, kind of approach you might want to hold on to and and keep going when we return to more full in-person instruction. So it was an exciting, an exciting day, and teachers were enjoyed the time, and and I wanted to thank you for for providing the time. The presenters here, these are all the folks who presented, and I'm very lucky to have folks who were willing to pitch in and and to share their expertise with with their peers. That's Lauren Hessammar, Evan Greenwald, Lindsay Copens, Dan Walti, Michelle Shepherd, Kristen Turner, Brittany Burns, Colleen Barry, Brian Kellet and Nate Utar. They did a great job. So I'm very proud of them for that hard work. Just to give you an update, I have been meeting, I had my second meeting of the reopening think tank. That is my group that I convened in July, and we worked through July into September to develop the model that we are currently in and then several other models for consideration for reopening school. They've gotten back together with me to start to consider what are our options for increasing time on in-person learning should conditions allow? So every school is doing some version of this. The elementaries are already ahead of the middle and high school levels in every school community in looking at how they can get students to have more in-person time on learning, which we already discussed in this meeting, is really something nobody, I think, would argue. Everybody would would argue is is what we're aiming for at some point when when the health and safety metrics allow for it. In the meetings, we looked at CDC and DESI guidance, and then we have been considering the benefits and and costs of various scenarios from nominal small changes that might deliver more in-person time on learning to full-blown return of every kid and every seat. And that would also provide its, that would provide considerable challenges that we're And that would also provide its, that would provide considerable challenges that we we have to sort out. My goal for this kind of work is to consider all the various ways those challenges can be met. I've asked my team to consider four different areas for each of the scenarios I've pitched at them. Those are health and safety, academic, operational slash logistical, and then social emotional. So each one of the reopening scenarios we're considering has some real advantages on each of those measures, but also some disadvantages, as you might imagine. My goal is to, is that once we find out more and as our knowledge evolves, we will be able to have at least a draft idea in place for how to reopen in a model that makes sense without having to delay to do planning. So the idea is to do as much planning as possible now with as much good information as we have. So that should should these, should we be asked to do so, we'll be able to to access plans that are at least in draft form and thought through as much as possible. Okay. Now that we're shifting into the second semester, our, we're really focusing on our seniors. I will say, I don't think I was doing a a good job. In fact, I think I was doing a poor job of communicating with our seniors and our parents, senior parents. They are at the forefront of our mind and they are having an unfortunate year for the end of their their high school and they're under their career in our Northborough and Southborough schools. And we have plans that have been coming together, but I've not been communicating about what those plans might be. And so those, some small plans are starting to un, to roll out. And some of the bigger, the bigger things we have planned, we're gonna start to communicate to families. So on the first day of the second semester, the PTO dressed up the the building, the the rotunda and the and then the two other entrances to the building. We have a star with every kid's name on it and we have balloons and all kinds of other really lovely decorations that the the amazing, really truly amazing Algonquin PTO thought this up, came out, helped us do the decorating, did a lot of the decorating themselves. And so that the kids really enjoyed seeing that. And it was a reminder to them that we are aware that they're having this year. That's not the best way to end a end a career, but we have lots of fun things planned for them today. And yesterday, we handed out senior treats to to all members of the senior class. Each kid got a Class of 2021 mug, a cookie and a coupon to Main Street Pastries. So so these were just small things that we're gonna try to to feed out to kids and to remind them that we're we're celebrating and recognizing their their excellence and their contributions to our school as we plan some bigger events. So we are being, trying to be mindful that we learn, a lot of schools learned the hard way. I can only speak for my former school that when you announce things that you have to pull back on, it's it's a little bit more painful and problematic than to 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 finalize plans and then and then tell the the community that you're able to pull them off. So we're being a little bit guarded in how much we're able to share about the planning we're we're doing on some of the bigger events until some of those are finalized. We just don't want to get students' hopes up about major events that that might be shifted or changed. But nonetheless, I have a really wonderful team of senior advisors and senior students and subcommittees of senior leaders who are planning some really fun things. Okay, so that was the parts I had planned. And then I'm gonna be kicking it over to and introducing Andy McGowan to talk about MCAS. But I talked a lot about several different things. I don't know if anybody has any questions that you'd like me to answer about the PD program or about about our our work with seniors or anything else I discussed?
I have a question, but I will defer to the board members first. I have Paul Desmond, Sean O'Shea and Paul Buck.
Thank you, Joan. Thanks, Sean, for that presentation. I got two things. One, first, I think it's great that you pulled that PD together so quickly. I mean, I guess the response from survey data and I think feedback from us at our last meeting, it's just great to see, see you kind of pounce on that. So kudos to you on that.
Thank you, Paul.
On the returning kids to school, didn't see a target date. And the last one I saw was after April break, which I thought was not nearly aggressive enough. I mean, I would love to see kids back, you know, just ASAP. I think, as we've heard earlier, you know, I think we all agree that's, that should be the goal. I would love to see us put a date on it and make it much more aggressive than, you know, mid-April. That's my feedback.
Thank you.
Sean O'Shea?
My question was gonna be around the same thing. And in light of the commissioner and governor's comments yesterday, I don't know if, there probably isn't much more information now, but I think the, I'm not, what does that do to the thinking about reopening, I, of the high school, I would say? Because there was a a lot, a lot dropped in the news yesterday about that.
Yeah, I, I.
And that's probably for more for Superintendent Martino. I don't expect you, Sean, to have all the details on that yet. But I mean, and it just came out yesterday. But I I'm wondering if there's gonna be much of a choice in terms of a timeline? And also, I know you have a great, you know, safe and healthy committee together. But, you know, and another question I would have about reopening would be around the three-foot versus six-foot mark for the high school.
Yes, it just asked a lot of really good questions for the superintendent.
It's that, Sean, you can jump in as any time. So just a couple of comments. So I think the first is that I think that the governor and the commissioner of education's push to reopen schools and remove the emergency regulation is a good indication of what we should be planning for in terms of returning, you know, five days of in-person learning a week. I think that the challenge has always been the the social distancing, you know, the three, the six feet. So we have the six-feet foot standard. We're working very closely with our medical advisory team. Part of our goal is to get to the screen screening level of 80%. So 80% of our student population is being screened on a weekly basis. I think that's a key indicator. But I see that will, and I also think that vaccinations could could move rather quickly. I think in the news, probably many of you heard that the Johnson and Johnson vaccination could be available in a couple of weeks, which is great news. So what we're we're aiming toward is, you know, having some more concrete plans for parents. You know, Principal Bevan, also the two middle schools, we're having many conversations behind the scenes. And we will have a calendar of what we're thinking in terms of timeline. It's realistic and we'll be sharing with that with families. So that's, that's more information to come, but the planning is happening. The conversations are happening and it is complex specifically at the high school when you have 1,400, you know, students, lunch, hallway travel. But those obstacles can be overcome and Principal Bevan is working toward that.
I guess, and I'm very confident that, because you guys have done such a great job all the way through. I'm just wondering if there's, do you feel like there's gonna be much of a choice in terms of the social distancing, keeping it close to six feet? Or or will our hand be forced? Yeah.
No, so we, so just in terms of social distancing, we know we can't return all students back at six feet or greater. We know we have to go into that three-to-six-foot range. So I think we've presented in the past that we have partnered with Canon Design to develop a tool to be able to analyze all of our classrooms at Algonquin and see, you know, what the social distancing is. I think the complexity at Algonquin, too, where you don't have it at the elementary level, for example, is that the class sizes range. So you might have a class of 15, but you also might have a class of 26. So Principal Bevan and his team are looking at those class ranges that are that are problematic and thinking about how many are there and what are solutions to be able to make sure that we're, you know, we're within the guidelines of social distancing, no less than three feet. So it's a lot, it's a lot of moving parts. I'll give you one example. It's ordering, it's ordering new cleaning supplies because the cleaning supplies that we have now, the dwell time is six minutes. So when you spray it, you have to wait six minutes. So we're reordering new cleaning disinfectant that has a dwell time of a minute. So those are the types of things that you would never think that are part of this equation, but are. So, but I'm confident we'll get there. I think we, you know, Paul Desmond, to your point, we want to move as quickly as as possible, but we also want to do it in a way that is, you know, keeps the safety of our students in mind and our educators and includes the medical advisory team's recommendations.
Okay, next is Paul Buck.
Thank you, Joan. Sean, if I, if I could, the the think tank group that you put together to talk about what it's gonna be like with, when in-person learning goes back up to four and five days a week, you know, just kind of back, maybe a broken record here, but back on the topic of, you know, the the depth of coverage of various topics and subjects over the course of the past year or so. You know, I would, I would add to the list of things to consider the possibility of some sort of, I don't know, either either offshoots from study halls or after-class catch-up or remedial sort of learning activities or offerings to to students that, you know, kind of know that there's there's sections of the material that, you know, they covered and maybe they passed it at the time, but they never covered it nearly in the depth necessary to internalize it for, you know, for all time. And, you know, I just, just the thought of of, you know, any sort of opportunity we have to have improve on on that going forward, this might be, might be one of those opportunities.
Addressing, the phrase is learning loss is the the phrase we use in the building is, you know, how do we address learning loss? How do we identify what it is, how much it is happening, with which kids? And how can we, how can we reconcile that? And it's, there's no easy answers, but, you know, I hear you. It's it's something that worries us all.
Thank you.
Kathy Key?
Hey, I don't, I, Sean, I don't know if this goes to you or Greg, but have have we had the conversations with other districts who have gone back, in not necessarily Massachusetts, but other states or even Catholic schools, although Catholic schools are smaller, on how they adjusted their schools to get kids back in there? Like what they did, you know, passing in the classrooms and all that kind of stuff? Have we had those discussions? So it helps us go forward with our plan to reopen?
I can, I can only speak for myself, Kathy. And I can tell you that I haven't looked, I haven't spoken with schools that are all fully in. But what I can tell you is I I have the great luck of having a a deep network of fellow principals. And we're all comparing notes on features that might be, we might be thinking about adopting or trying out in our school that might add learning time that other schools are are doing, but they might be giving up learning time that we're we're employing. So I think, so I've already done that, done some of that. And in my former, my former district in Westwood, they're doing some things that we we haven't been doing. And that could deliver some gains. And so, yes, I'm still, I'm pulling together that information, but I've not done what you've asked, which is to to see, are there schools that are fully in person? I don't know how many are there, there are out there except for the Catholic schools that we're aware of.
So the medical advisory team has provided a tremendous amount of research. What we're working on is a one-page fact sheet of all the proof of concepts across the United States that where high schoolers have been back in person at less than six feet. And the transmission of the virus has been, you know, very low. So we're putting together our case, our argument. You know, we're looking at, you know, and again, screening is an important part of our our mitigation effort. So the medical advisory team has provided, provided us with a wealth of data that we're sharing with teachers. We are having a a couple of webinars on this upcoming Tuesday and the following Tuesday for our educators at the middle and high school level to give them information about the science and and those examples of schools across the country that have opened safely and returned to, you know, five days a week of in-person learning.
Okay, thank you. Sean, I have a question on this slide that is presented on the screen right now. Under the third bullet, when you talk about considering, considering benefits and cost of various scenarios, you have those four groups. Do you have, is it my, am I true, am I understanding that that you have people working in each one of those four areas? You have a subgroup or no?
No, I'm sorry. So, for example, we met yesterday and I put people in small groups. And I said, if we were to open school and a very nominal shift for us might be to make two, one-way hallways into two-way hallways and reduce passing time from 10 minutes to five minutes. That would give us five minutes back per class, every class, every day. And that would give us about a half an hour more of instruction every day. But I wanted people to help think, what might that, you know, what are the challenges of doing that? That seems to be not a ma- major shift. And so a small group considered, what are the health and safety challenges and benefits? Health, the academic advantages, disadvantages? And so we, I had them develop as an exercise, a thought exercise, what that would be. And I pitched to them about five different opening scenarios of increasing, increasing in-person, increasing the in-person instruction for kids. And they developed that and we can examine that and start to look at. So, for example, operational logistical is, can be a major stumbling block in a school of our size because feeding every kid without having it be unsafe, because they have to do so without their mask, can be a major challenge. Because right now, they're in our cafeteria and our gym. They're using desks that aren't needed because our classrooms are only at half-capacity. So, for example, the operational logistical challenges of feeding kids at six feet, which doesn't seem like that will change, are gonna be pretty significant because the furniture they're using to do so will have to be restored to the places where they're actually gonna be sitting and learning. So it's a very boring and not terribly glamorous challenge to have to solve. But that is nonetheless a challenge we'd have to solve. And this group helps me to identify that. And it's really great to have very smart, talented and volunteer members of my staff helping me to pre-identify those and figure out, well, if it means we need to order more furniture, perhaps that's worth that investment.
So just for clarification, are you saying that that standard of lunchtime, where the students are six feet apart, would be intact? That's gonna stay, that would not go to a lesser thing of three feet?
So I would, I would have to defer to the medical advisory team. That's what we're working on, work, working under that as a presumption, I suppose.
That is accurate. So just, Joan, if I could, I'll just end by by saying that, you know, as we look forward to the fall, because all this planning is not going to waste. You know, we want to get our students back as quickly as we can. When we think about returning in the fall to in-person learning, five days a week, it's not going to look that much different from from the next move we make to increase in-person learning. We have to do the work either now. Everything we do now is going to benefit us for a smooth opening in the fall at, at, you know, five days a week of in-person learning. So we are taking that approach. That is important to us. We're not looking just at our own two feet. We're trying to look down the road many months and and again, make the transition into the fall a much more seamless experience for our teachers and our students. And I think that's a common vested interest our teachers have as well and our students.
Right. And I was wondering, I know that when we did like class sizes, that we did a chart and it said like, how many classes had 10 to 12? How many had 20 to 25? How many classes had over 25? Have you done something like that to say, okay, how many spaces do we have that we could put a normal classroom in? How many, what extra spaces do we have? Do we have the black box theater, the auditorium? Are there spaces that we can reconfigure to be a classroom when you can't get them in a size that's too small? Have you done any of that or are you thinking about doing that?
No, we did that over the summer and and developed a real granular understanding of every room in the building and measured every single space in the building. And then have used the the calculator Greg described to try and come up with a ballpark figure on how many students we could fit in every single room at three feet, at four feet, at five feet and at six feet. We do need to do a a real-life test of of many, or if not all of those rooms at those levels to just make sure that, you know, the different features of each room are a little bit unique. We can only subscribe so much accuracy to the this online tool, which is a really great one. But we, it's incumbent upon us to get that right in a in a real-world scenario, not just in a in a theoretical scenario. So we've measured every room, we've counted, we're counting desks. And we did much of that work. And I need to to applaud Andy McGowan, who's one of our assistant principals, done really wonderful work in the, on this topic, along with our other assistant principals, Kathy and and Tim. But we have that data and then applying that data in real-world ways to reduce social distances of four feet and five feet and maybe down to three feet are things that we can, we are in the middle of doing right now. We have, we have the general data set, which we achieved in 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 July, really, and in through August. And now figuring out what that might look like for a, an opening that might be less than six feet is something we're, we're. And now figuring out what that might look like for a, an opening that might be less than six feet is something we're, we're determining now.
Okay. And I'd just like to say thank you for the tour that you gave to us in the summertime before the schools reopened because that was very beneficial to see the room, what it would look like with configuration of three feet with desk, six feet, the teachers with their spacing, you know, around their desk also. So thank you very much for that. And it gives a visual that we can use at this time. So thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome.
And Superintendent Martino, that's the end of the comments I see on this section from board members.
So if it's okay, Mr. Martino, I can switch over to having Mr. McGowan speak through this slide about our MCAS preparations.
Right, thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So as you can see here, DESI recently released their MCAS testing schedule for the spring. Originally, grade 11 was positioned to test in January and they moved that. And now it's going to be the same window that grade 10 has from May 3rd to June 4th. Grade 9 testing window is June 1st through 11th, and grade 9 for the science test is typically in that early first couple of weeks in June as it is. So right now, we're in the infancy of our planning phases in terms of kind of what we can do technology-wise and so forth with, with these tests. They are going to be computer-based for most students. And as you can see the note at the bottom there, DESI is encouraging all schools to plan for all students to be in-person taking the test. So kind of goes along with the, the previous conversation, but that's something that we're looking at too, to see just kind of how we can message that to our families, especially with those in the SAT programs and so forth. But also how we can plan for three classes testing in our springtime. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them. Thank you.
Yeah, we have, Andy, I'm sorry, we have one question.
Go ahead.
Shay? I was muted.
Maybe I missed. Is, I can't remember. Are they still requiring the testing for competency determination? Are we, like, last year they gave some, I think, a waiver on that, that had to go to the state legislature. Where are they this year in terms of that?
So the classified 21 has, that's been waived for science, technology, engineering, as well as math and ELA. And for the SDE test, grade 10, 11, and 12, like I just said, has been waived for the SDE test. So the CD still counts for grade 10, 11, and 9.
Okay. Thank you.
And I don't see any other questions or comments from board members at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. And next we have Nicole Demember, who is the, the department chair of our wonderful world languages department, and she has a presentation for us. I will have to defer to her. She will share her, her presentation on her computer. So Greg, if you can give her sharing permissions, that would be great.
Sure. Nicole, you are now the co-host.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to be here to talk to you about some of the things that we do in the world language department. I'm just going to share my screen so we can get started on the presentation. So here, I just really wanted to start with the French exchange program. Ms. Osipchak has done a phenomenal job organizing the program and she's worked really hard to, you know, create this great opportunity for our students here at Algonquin. You can see in these pictures here, there's a lot of communication that was going on. And I just distinctly remember hearing such great enriching conversations with the kids. I mean, they were making comparisons in regards to clothing. I remember them looking at like, you know, the differences and talking about what it's like in France versus here in America. They had conversations about the school systems and some of the differences there. And in our classroom, we, we really work hard at talking about the different cultures and making those comparisons. But this experience was just great in that it was so authentic and organic. The kids had such a great time and they connected with the students, the exchange students. And personally, I was really happy to be a part of this. If you take a look over here at the picture on the right, we had hung up two posters. One said that, you know, "We love America" and, and the other one said, "Why we love France." And so our students made some comments about why they love France, and then the French students did the same for America. And it was just really nice to have the kids look at the different comments and see what the French students said about us and, and vice versa. And, you know, hopefully it just helped to get, have them gain a level of appreciation and tolerance for different languages. And again, it was so fun to watch and I just want to commend Ms. Osipchak on that great work. This is a slide here of something that we did last year. Our Spanish students during the holidays learned a traditional song. It's called "Mi burrito sabanero." And it was a fun activity we did for every class. We got out into the hallway. And I have a little video here for you to just take a look at and so you can see all the great singing that went on. So as you can see, I mean, I had fun there singing too, but it was really nice to do that every class period. The kids learned a traditional song that's, that's sung during the holidays. And hopefully we'll be able to incorporate that in the future with our French students and get the Latin students singing as well. Okay, here we go. So also we celebrated Foreign Language Week and throughout the week we did several different activities. So one thing that we did is we just had morning announcements. We said a specific, like a, a little fact about different languages or cultures every morning. And something that I remember what happened was we had made an announcement that the United States does not have English as their official language. And some students didn't know that. And just in hearing that, we had some great discussions as to why that is and should we have an official language or should we not? And so that was just a positive thing that came out of that week. Something else that we did was we had different linguistic activities. So as you can see here, we had several different worksheets where we had different languages, but this one is Gilbertis. And so the students just took a look at the language and figured out different patterns and what that meant in English. And then down below, there were different activities. And then they were able to then translate a sentence in English into Gilbertis. So that was just a fun activity to do and just something different other than, you know, just working with French, Spanish, and Latin. Throughout the week, we also worked with and just analyzed different artists and their work. We read poems, listened to music, we had little fiestas with food. And we had a really fun competition as well. So what we did is the whole entire department for each class, we all competed against one another. And that's just a picture of one class just being really excited about doing it and wanting to win. We got some competitors in our school. And if you notice this picture here, so this is what happened in the beginning of the class. Everyone would see the question up on the board and the class would vote and give their answer to the teacher, and then each teacher would put in the, the class's answer. So it took about 10 minutes or so, and after all the questions were done, we had winners. And the questions really just was a great way for us to explore different languages and different cultures. And, which is, is nice for other people to connect with those different aspects of culture. But the winners really wanted to cheer and they were so excited and they wanted to brag by running through the halls. And it was just a really fun time and we all really enjoyed it. The picture on the left that I have here is just showing you a, a typical project that the kids would do. They learned how to make, create commands. And so what they did is they researched a certain dessert or an entree. And then they got the recipe and then they had to translate it into Spanish with the commands. And they not only did that, but they prepared the foods and then brought it into this class and presented it. And of course, at the end, we all got to enjoy the goods and it was a good time. It was a great way for the students to really show what they learned and utilize that information. On the right, there's a group of students here, they're Latin students, and they read a short story. And after they analyzed it, they did their own interpretation. So I, again, I have another quick little video for you to take a look at and see the great work they're doing. I also have another picture here that I would like to show you. On the left, that's a Spanish student, and what they did is they read a different poem, everyone read different poems and they analyzed them. But then they remembered, memorized them and then recited them in front of their peers out in the courtyard. So that was a great little activity that they did there. And so these are just different activities that I wanted to show you that we have done throughout the past, you know, couple of years here at Algonquin. And we really, there's several different activities that we do. So we'll, we'll do like podcasts, these presentations. People will recite poetry and we really try to do, have our students engaged as much as possible and have a great time while they're learning. This is a, a picture here of Ms. Steele, this year, working with her students, teaching them how to make papel picado, which is just colorful paper that has different patterns and you can hang them up and use them as decoration. And here are a few other pictures that we have, just illustrating what it looks like this year for our students. We, our educators have worked so hard this year to create engaging plans with our students. All the kids, they do use all the speaking, reading, listening, and writing skills. And we're using the classroom as well as the hallways. They're able to work in a safe distance and move around and yet be challenged. And so it's, it's been really nice to have the kids in front of us. I'd like to talk about, quickly about the school improvement plan. So goal number three for us is to ensure that we continue with professional development for the faculty and staff. And personally, I just want to thank the whole district for all of the professional development opportunities that they've provided us and the resources and the support because, you know, not only am I going to use, and us, we're going to use all of this support and resources during the pandemic, but also in the future to come. So I just want to say I, I really appreciate that. But this is a picture of what we did last year. I went to a workshop. And an activity that we did is that we were given several different excerpts of student work. And we had to look at them and then distinguish which piece of work would go in certain benchmarks or proficient, for proficiency standards. So it was a great activity for me, and so I brought it back to the department and had them get into groups of two. So in that way, they could do the same thing. And they did a great job. And it's just another example of how we all work together and collaborate with one another and really just work hard to try to be the best educators that we can be. And lastly, is the seal of biliteracy. I'm excited to say that we are going to offer our senior students to take the seal of biliteracy exam. And so what that means is if a student is fluent in another language and they take the stamp exam and they pass it by getting intermediate, higher, above, they will receive the seal that will go on their transcript or their diploma. And so that's just a great way to recognize our students for their ability to speak a language and it also looks good on their records. So that's everything that I have for tonight, and I want to thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nicole. On that seal of biliteracy, is that a written exam or is it written in oral competency?
It focuses on all the skills. It has to focus on all of, all of them. So it's speaking, listening, reading, and writing.
Okay, thank you. There's a question.
I'm sorry, Ms. and Madam Chair, worth noting, the seal of biliteracy doesn't just cover students proficiency in, in languages we offer. It's also, students can qualify for that if they perhaps let's say speak a different language in the home, Chinese perhaps, if they, if they grow up in a home where Chinese is spoken, they're able to qualify for the seal of biliteracy, which Nicole has, has helped to, to foster an interest in this program. And we're able to recognize excellence in students who might have mastery of languages beyond the ones we teach them.
And can that seal of biliteracy, can that be given at any grade level?
It technically can, yes.
Okay, thank you. Question comment from Dan Kalenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nicole, that was an outstanding presentation. Really appreciate it. Brings me back to my days learning French in eighth grade and, and Latin in high school and, and then Chinese in college and what, what, you know, and, and, and I, and I love that very first part about, you know, students, you know, taking a look at, and I think there was the flags of, of France up and, you know, and, and how kids can really appreciate other cultures, appreciate other peoples through getting to know, you know, their language, getting to know their history. I mean, you know, the French helped us in the Revolutionary War. And, and some think that, you know, we wouldn't be here were it not for the French and, and their assistance in the Revolutionary War. I had the honor of, of going to Normandy, France, and, and Omaha Beach, and Utah Beach and, and, and seeing the, and meeting with, you know, French citizens who absolutely love and respect Americans. And so, you know, that camaraderie that we have through, unfortunately, through conflicts that happen in both of our countries. And so, again, just amazing presentation. Thank you for what you're doing to help educate our kids and helping them learn about other cultures and other people through language.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Paul Becca.
Thank you, Joan. Nicole, yeah. Certainly, thank you for, for, I'd never heard of the seal of biliteracy before. It's, it sounds like a terrific concept and I'm glad you brought us up to speed on it. And then just, you know, love the presentation, love the pictures. But I do want to kind of a little bit selfishly, from the committee's point of view, go out of my way to say, this is the second time tonight we've had an educator mention how appreciative they were of the professional development opportunities that we provide to the faculty and staff at Algonquin. And I, for one, would like to thank you for acknowledging that and I'll let you know how much I appreciate it hearing it.
Absolutely. Again, I can't thank the district enough. And it's, just sends a great message and knowing that they care so much about us and our students and willing to work together to provide those opportunities and supports is, is great.
Okay, and I do not see any other comments from board members. Hand it over to Greg.
I just want to thank Nicole for her leadership as department chair and, you know, she's, as you can, as you can tell, she's very enthusiastic and passionate about world language and, and, and getting her department to be the best it can be. So, so thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Yes, great job, Nicole. I think at this time, Madam Chair, we can have Mr. Masurino is prepared to provide an, an update on winter athletics finishing up and fall athletic, fall two athletics picking, picking up. He will need to, Greg, if you can give him sharing.
Thank you, responsibilities.
Nicole, you're no longer the co-host. Mike, you're the co-host now.
All right, perfect. Can you see my screen, everyone else? Perfect. Well, first of all, thank you, everyone. Good evening and thank you for having me. Before I provide Um well, first of all, thank you, everyone. Good evening and uh thank you for having me uh before I provide an update on fall two sports. I'd like to give a kind of a brief recap of where we kind of stand and uh kind of go over the the winter season. Um I'm proud to say that we completed two successful nine-week fall and winter seasons that allowed close to four hundred and ninety of our student athletes to get back to participating in athletics. Um the first two seasons were unprecedented, as we all aware. And we but we never lost focus of the number one priority, which is the health and the safety of our students and our staff. Our athletes did a wonderful job complying with the rules, following the guidelines and adjusting to the sport-specific modifications, which we all know is they were not playing the same season that we're all accustomed to. Um I think all of our athletes were ecstatic and appreciative of the fact that uh they had a chance to experience a season, um even though it did not look or feel the same. I truly believe that uh completing the fall and winter seasons uh thus far is a feat that uh that cannot go under celebrated. We uh we had some minor interruptions, but uh with the amazing leadership and guidance provided by Mary Ellen Duggan, Dr. Medina, the COVID medical team and the entire ARHS nurse staff, we were able to minimize the impact and keep the seasons going uh without compromising in-person learning and the health and safety of our students and our staff. So I'd like to start off with that first. Before I get into fall two, like I mentioned, I'd like to go over our winter recap. On twelve fourteen, the winter interscholastic athletic season began. We had twelve teams, which is boys and girls basketball, both boys and girls hockey, gymnastics, swimming and skiing, and close to two hundred and twenty-five student athletes participated. Boys and girls uh hockey, boys and girls basketball completed an eight to twelve game regular season schedule. And both swimming and gymnastics finished undefeated at five and O. Um I would like to say congratulations out to our boys and girls ski team. Both won their pod and in the Central Mass Ski League and the ski team, uh girls ski team went undefeated in their matches and their races, I should say. Uh completing a successful winter season was memorable and marvelous feat, as I've mentioned before, in these during these unusual times. Our winter recap in in continuation would be our mid-watch and Central Mass leagues had no spectators at winter events, so athletics partnered with Northborough Cable Access and uh live stream all of our sporting events. And I don't know if you can see in the top right-hand corner, that's um Jeff Ellis, he was a two thousand fifteen graduate who came back and volunteered his time to help us livestream our basketball events, all three levels for both boys and girls, JV one, JV two and varsity. And uh attended our boys and girls hockey games and filled in sporadically for gymnastics. Last time I reported, we were around twelve, but now we're up to seventeen student athletes who have now signed their letter of intent and have a chance to play at the next level, the collegiate level. Down the right-hand column, many of us may may know who this family is, but uh that's uh Molly Callahan and family. Molly committed to Keene State for swimming. That's a sort of our our ceremony that we hold uh with every athlete that signs their letter of intent to play at the next level. We are continuing our student ambassador program, which um includes Nick Alcock, who is not in the picture, Danielle Adams and Katie Cullen, and they will continue to participate in virtual league and MIA league workshops for our student prep with our student ambassadors across Massachusetts. Two things they will be doing is discussing upcoming initiatives and events for volunteer opportunities. And they are becoming an active and involved particip- participant within the MIAA. Our uh as I mentioned before in this uh our we were not permitted uh access for spectators were not permitted access to our winter event. So we did come together as league A Ds and uh our senior parents only and guardians were permitted to attend senior night events since it's under limited capacity. And so we were allowed to have our senior parents and guardians participate in post-game ceremony. And the team celebrated the families and the players and recognized the seniors and thanked them for their years of dedication and commitment to their program. As you can see here, our girls uh seniors who graduated this year and our boys basketball seniors, all of them masked up. And uh in the lower right, that's uh Bully Jack Blair. And if you can see in the background there, um it's sort of a school-spirited uh cardboard cutouts that our uh boys hockey families uh created to show a little bit of school spirit, even though they could not be in attendance. They were at every hockey game. Our roadmap to fall, that was our recap for winter, but our roadmap to fall athletics begins with the uh EEA like has done every single year, every single season, uh starting back in fall and then through the winter. Um the MIA will then take in all that consideration um and come up with the MIA board of directors will approve the EEA recommendations and the sports medicine recommendations. Um and then the athletic directors will take all of these rules and then they will modify that into the fall two season. Um of course, our main focus continues to be the health and safety of all of our student athletes as we start a new year or start a new season, I should say. Fall two sports, the following sports are being offered for the fall two season. Football, which started on two twenty-two, which was this past Monday, girls volleyball, indoor track cheerleading, unified basketball. Not sponsored, which was moved prior in the winter, was wrestling was moved to the spring and competitive cheerleading was moved also moved to the spring. As of fall two, we have close to two hundred and eighty student athletes who will be participating in the fall two season. Um our fall two season will start on February twenty-second and conclude on April twenty-fifth. Football begins on uh the twenty-second, cheerleading, unified basketball and girls volleyball will begin on Monday, March first. And our indoor track will begin on Monday, March fifteenth. As uh as it as our previous years, fall two uh fall and winter, there will be no MIA tournament for the fall two season. We will continue uh after the due to the various guidance of for athletics put forth by the EEA and MIAA. Um various sports will see rule changes and modifications to play for this upcoming fall two season. Uh the MIA Sports Medicine Committees, uh both committees and the task force all work together to develop modifications to safely play fall two sports. After reviewing the fall and winter models and extensive discussion, Central Mass and Mid-Watch Athletic Directors um have decided to continue with the same model that we used in fall and winter and continue with the pod model. And these pods were designed based on league, geography and com- competitive balance. Teams will only play teams within their pod and they will not cross over into any other pod. We found this to be a very successful method for the for the fall and winter season. And teams, again, during the fall two season will play a shortened modified season. All the protocols that we've discussed, all the athletic directors have discussed are going to be included in fall two. Um and we are still working on finalizing the general pod guidelines. All of our schedules and tryouts are are formalized and will be released shortly. Our practice sessions, competitive uh competitions, game day management, athletic trainer, training room possibilities. This is all which is in our season-by-season handbook, which will be provided online and to our families and to our coaches. Now we talked about our coaches meeting and accessible for our students online. And they will know every protocol and guideline that they need to follow um moving into the season. Uh lastly, I would just like to say uh thank you uh to the coaches and athletes and staff and personnel and superintendent Mart No, ARHS administration, school committee, district COVID medical team, everybody that was involved in making this happen. And the most important, the students uh for their efforts to make this whole season, this whole year, reality. Our student athletes are truly grateful that they had the opportunity to play, have fun, compete. But most importantly, they've had the opportunity to create amazing memories, something that we missed out on at the end of last season. Athletics helps in re-engaging and building interpersonal skills and connections that our off that our students seek as we navigate our way back to some sort of normalcy. Um and is vital as part of the student's high school experience. And we prepare to continue and offer programming that is in line with state and local rules and guidelines. Including tonight's brief presentation is where we are now and where we are headed. All plans are subject to change based on the health data. And as we move forward, though, into the fall season, I feel it's important for me to remind and mention that all the sports will continue not to look the same as we're all used to. There are going to be many changes to the programs into the season, but we are confident that we can provide an opportunity to participate by offering a fulfilling, creative and fun experience for our athletes, in addition to maintaining safe and compliant and being compliant amidst the ongoing pandemic. So I would like to say thank you for your continued support. As we continue as a community to navigate these uncertain times, the ARHS Athletics Department is excited about the possibilities that fall two season hopes to bring us. And we very much look forward to cheering our T-Rex again for the third season and during this unprecedented year for the fall season two. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mike. Uh Mike, I have one question. Do you still meet with student representatives, like a student athletic council or anything?
I'm meeting with the student ambassadors. Um and we are looking to set up the uh student ambassador through via virtual uh in the upcoming end of, well, middle of fall season two to kind of kickstart that going into the the spring season.
Okay, and do those ambassadors, do they change so that you can have more representation from different teams and give that leadership position?
We typically only have three student ambassadors that represent that that we register with the MIA, which is one sophomore, one junior and one senior. And um but what we do have including new this year, actually started at the end of last year, was uh meeting with all of our representatives, all this the teams from Athletic Council, leadership team, but then including all of our captains on the team for every single season. So the Leadership Council has grown.
It has, okay. And you gave us the numbers for the athletic, you know, for the student athletes. How would you compare that to two years ago when we didn't have the pandemic? Is the participation still up or is it a little bit down?
I think it's right on par because we haven't offered all the sports that normally happens within the season. So when we add up the sorts that sports that normally participate and compare that to the participation numbers of the specific sports from last year, it's right, right? It's even.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. That really is. Um and do you still do intermurals or no?
We're 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 running uh, there's an intermural basketball program that generally runs in the wintertime uh through the Recreation Department. Uh but uh we also are running the clubs and activities uh uh through our Clubs and Activity Advisor, but through the Athletic Department, we're not doing uh clubs and activities at this time.
Okay, so you're just doing basketball. Is that what you're saying?
Basketball intermurals, yes, correct.
Okay, and when did they begin?
They usually do it in the winter, but it was not uh allowed approved for this winter due to the the unavailable of getting into renting the space and not being able to run the event through Northborough Recreation.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. And I see we have and thanks for for your leadership and uh and coming very frequently to our meetings. I know that all the board members appreciate it and the parents and the community members that watch these meetings. Thank you, Mike. Um I have Paul Bucka and then Paul Desmond.
Thank you, Joan. Mike, thanks for the presentation. I suspect you know what this question is. How many kids have taken the uh the test, the you know, the pre-concussion testing uh that that uh we offered to them all? Uh and and are the coaches and the captains still kind of emphasizing and trying to push that is that you know, we talk about student safety. This is this is one component. It's been something we've been sorely lacking in. I'd really love it to be part of your presentations when when you give them to us and then I wouldn't have to keep asking you this quick.
I can go back and get the data. I do not have the numbers for you, but I can absolutely fill that out, fill you in the committee. The last time that we checked that I did a pre, you know, season test too for the fall was, I believe it was hovering around eighteen or twenty. Uh what I can tell you is that we are, you know, we were sitting at about eight last year uh with this voluntary test, but what I can say to you is that as a matter of fact, that my letter to to the both communities uh are going to go out shortly about our impact testing through our one-call system. I am meeting individually with every team after the season starts uh and meeting and that is a part of my discussion with both the athletes and the parents. So that message is being sent out there. Um again, the goal last year, when we were going to launch in March, was going to be those lab dates that we were going to have for all of our teams to participate in and make those available. And I'm hoping that that, depending on how we go with in-school learning and what we are able to do with the classroom, I'm hoping that we can try to implement that at the end of spring this year to get everybody involved uh to participate in those labs, those lab dates through our athletic trainer.
So eight eighteen is certainly progress. It's still a pretty small percentage of the hundreds and hundreds of athletes that you've got participating in the program, but at least it's progress. So I appreciate that.
Yep.
Keep it up if you could.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul Desmond.
Uh thanks, Joan. Mike, I totally agree. This is an unprecedented year, especially when you have a fall season following a winter season. You know, some something's different. But uh I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and for for just the great work you've done all year. I picked my son up today from football practice at NEBC and I I kind of couldn't believe it. Because I really thought, you know, of all the sports I've done football, there's no way they're going to be able to get this in, but but so far, so good. So I just want to say a great job.
Thank you.
Uh Dan Kalenda.
Yeah, Mike, uh also, great job. I mean, uh tough, tough year to do this and you're you're making the best of it. Uh you know, to Paul's comment on the concussion protocols, I do know and and uh I I don't know how this is taken into account, but anytime that I've ever had to go on and register uh for an upcoming sport, there is those questions about when the last concussion was. And and or was there one? When was it? Uh you know, is that taken into consideration in your count of how many parents are actually uh actively involved in um in providing that level of information?
We don't necessarily account for that information as uh part of the registration. Uh what we're trying to account for is how many families are taking uh the uh impact concussion test uh at the beginning of the year, which is a separate tool. Um we could potentially add that to our registration process and get the feedback to see and make that a part of our registration process to kind of improve the product to make sure that we can get it out there and more successful for our families.
Yeah, because Mike, I mean, I see it every time. So you know, I I know when when it, you know, you know, Paul's comments last year and this year uh are, you know, continue to be good ones and and you know, the more that I, you know, great that you're meeting with folks and you're getting the word out. I mean, I see it on the registration and I assume something is done with that information. It's not just me clicking boxes for the fun of it. I mean, I assume the school is doing something with that. If not, you know, let us know, but it's there and I and I and I trust I'm not the only uh you know, parent who has to do that. It's it's a good thing.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, um Mike, and uh there aren't any other questions or comments from board members.
Thank you.
I think that concludes my principal's report. I do want to say Mike has done an outstanding job um this whole year and and um we're lucky to have him. He's done a really wonderful job and has shown tremendous leadership. So so thank you, Mike, and thank you, Nicole, for your for your presentation. And I think that concludes the principal's report.
And I just would like to echo Sean's remarks. Mike, you've done an outstanding job kind of leading in this uncharted waters. So so thank you. Um you know, Mike has put the safety of our student athletes first. It also has had a tremendous impact on bringing some sense of normalcy um to at least our student athletes um this year. So so thank you for your leadership. All right, so so next in the packet is the um enrollment report um as of February twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Um as of that date, we had one thousand three hundred and fifty-one students enrolled, um which represented a three-student decrease uh since the January report. Um and basically those we had a couple of students move away and a a couple of residency um issues that we found. So um but the enrollment remains fairly steady. Also in your report is the FY twenty-one monthly fund, uh general fund expenditure report. Um and also Becky will share an update on the COVID nineteen financial impact. So I will turn it over to Becky Bellgrima.
Good evening. Um as of January thirty-first, we had two hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars or one point zero two remaining on the bottom line. Um in comparison to last year, we had two point seven four percent remaining or six hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. The major reason for that difference is if you'll notice on the PPE supply line item, we do have um our thing that we have been conducting. We have issued invoices to both towns, um Northborough and Southborough, as they will be reimbursing the district um through their CARES Act money that they had received. Um so you will actually see that um removed from this monthly general fund um in the next month's report. Um and so with that, um Mrs. Chair, I didn't know if you wanted to take a vote on the monthly general fund before I moved on to my presentation?
Yes, I thank you very much. That's what I like to do. So at this time, I like to entertain a motion to accept until audited the um monthly expenditure report uh as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
So moved by Dan, seconded by Paul Bucka. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yep.
Kathleen Holland? Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Shawna Shay?
Yes.
Kathleen Palczko?
Yes.
And myself, yes, passes unanimous. I'll turn it back to you, Becky.
Thank you. So next I will, uh, share with you, um, the update on the financial, um, impact that COVID nineteen is having on the district. Um, at last month's meeting, I had, um, given you a new grant fund, which was the State Coronavirus, um, Prevention Fund, and that was the twenty-five dollars per student plus an additional seventy-five dollars, um, for low-income students, um, that the district received. We did see the first half of that payment, um, in February, and so that is forty-four thousand, fifty dollars. Um, that does have to be expended by the end of this fiscal year. Um, right above that, you'll also notice that there is a new entry, and that is the ESER two. Um, so this is a new round of the stimulus funding that came out of Washington. It was signed in to, um, law at the end of December. Um, and so this fund is, um, available to us. It is one hundred and four thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars. And we actually have until the end of fiscal year twenty-three to expend those funds. And, um, one thing to note with this grant is that ten thousand of this does have to be allocated specifically for mental health services for students. So we will be working as an administrative team to come up with a plan for, um, the use of those funds. In terms of the expenses, we really are tracking true to where we had anticipated, um, with those areas that we were most concerned of. Um, the two exceptions to that would be the teacher substitutes and the additional staff that I've mentioned at previous, um, school committee meetings. And then the other area really where, um, we're seeing the higher number is the PPE, but again, that is due to the, um, attachment protocols that will be, um, absorbed by the town's CARES Act money. Um, but right now we are trending right in line with where we thought we would be. Uh, for the food service program, um, so we do have some positive news to re-report. Um, it does seem that some of our, um, students are taking advantage, um, or more students are taking advantage of the, the program. Um, so as of right now, our year-to-date total is a negative sixty thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Um, that does reflect, um, the salaries that at last month's meeting, um, we did, um, agree to remove from our operational budget. Um, and it also does reflect the, um, CVRF, the School Meal Program Grant. Um, we are hearing, um, but we have not seen anything yet, um, from, come out from DESI that there may be additional federal funding coming from, um, the USDA that will help some meal programs who are, um, seeing declines, um, due to the hybrid programs and the reduction in the number of students. Um, Keith, did you want to add anything on the food service program?
Uh, thanks, Becky. Yeah, just a couple of things. One, our, uh, meal pickup program continues to be pretty successful on Mondays. Diane Cofer and the team have done a nice job of providing meals to our, our high school students and remains open to all that are from zero, age zero to twenty-two. Uh, we do that in three locations throughout the district, so just another plug for that. I know, uh, people have heard from me a couple of times on that throughout the year. I would also say that we are looking at other grant opportunity. We have applied for an, uh, another infrastructure-type grant, which would allow us different storage equipment in the cafeterias that would allow for more flexible, uh, serving opportunities. So we're waiting to hear back on that, but that was a grant submission that was made, um, a couple of weeks ago.
And that is the end of, um, my presentation, if there are any questions.
Uh, Becky, I have one question. On the last slide that you presented, it's food service. The last, uh, box at the bottom, you say meals needed per year. What does that mean?
That would be in order for us to cover our anticipated expenses. That was the number that we had identified at the beginning of the school year. We would require, um, we would need to serve eighty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-four meals over the course of the school year. At this point, as of January thirty-first, we had served twenty thousand, two hundred and five.
Hmm, okay.
And that was just a break even.
Can we anticipate with the Keta Five school, oh, it's Keta Five. Um, if we go into in-person learning and we increase the days, can you anticipate that that would be more lunches served, more breakfast?
Uh, the chair, yes, I, I believe so. We have kind of done some speculation on that. I, I believe that we will. Um, but like with everything related to this, it's gonna be difficult until we actually see it happen. Uh, I know Principal Bevan has been extremely creative on how we're gonna make the lunches work, uh, for more in-person learning. Uh, so that will be certainly something we do, and I think, uh, Diane Cofer and her team are gonna have to be even more creative with how we do it. But we are expecting an increase with, uh, the bottom-line meals that we're gonna be able to do over the course of a week.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. I don't see any questions or comments from board members, so Becky and Keith, thank you very much for the presentation.
All right, so next in your packet is the FY twenty-one Statement of Revenue, and again, I will turn it over to Becky.
Um, so you will note on the revenue report as of January thirty-first, um, twenty twenty-one, um, that we have received all of the normal monthly revenues such as chapter seventy, student fees for athletics, activity and park, and parking. We also received our second quarterly payment for Circuit Breaker. What we have not yet received is our regional transportation reimbursement. Um, and so that is, um, one thing that we are actually reaching out to DESI to find out, um, what timeline we could expect that payment. Because last year we did receive it, um, at the beginning of February.
Okay, so at this time I'm, we'll be looking for a motion to accept the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District Statement of Revenue of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Paul, was that Paul?
Dan.
Dan, I'm sorry, Dan. By Dan Kalenda, seconded by? Paul Buckett. Any discussion? Uh, roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Buckett?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yep.
Kathleen Holland? She might be gone. Kathy Key?
Nope, sorry. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ca- thank you, Kathleen. Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Shawna Shay?
Yes.
Kathleen Palczko?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and it's passed unanimous.
All right, so next in your packet is the FY twenty-two Budget Calendar, which I will speak further about in, um, the Recommended Budget Presentation. I'm pleased this evening to share with the committee and the community the FY twenty-two Recommended Budget. This budget was presented in several draft formats first in December and then, um, in more detail in January and as well as the Operational Budget Subcommittee has had several meetings. So I always begin by talking about, um, the fact that we are a mission and vision-driven organization. Uh, we're not about the bottom line and, um, profit. We're about really helping students develop into the best individuals they can be. Our mission is simple. It's educate, inspire, and challenge all students. And our vision really is about, um, you know, ensuring that our students are leaving Algonquin being, um, collaborators, creative and critical thinkers, communicators, socially and civically engaged and growth-oriented. Um, with the reauthorization of the, um, new strategic plan, Vision Twenty-Twenty-Six, um, it was a great opportunity to rethink about our, our mission and our vision. In terms of the budget process, so as, um, the committee is well aware, uh, the budget process begins early on in September. Uh, and Becky Pellegrino and her, and the finance team, Central Office has done a great job. And it is a collaborative process in terms of working with the Algonquin Leadership Team, Department Chairs, um, and educators, as well as the Central Office Team, um, really thinking about what we want to accomplish. Um, so the Budget Process Calendar really speaks to all the key events, um, leading up to tonight's presentation. Just a comment around the next, uh, key event is tomorrow night, um, when, um, I will present to the Northborough Corporations Committee. Um, so I'll present the pre-K through eight budget and the regional budget, and that will be in at six o'clock, and I believe Cheryl Lefry has sent out an invitation, uh, to the committee members to attend. Um, in terms of the, the March and April town meetings, I think, um, it is too early at this point in time to tell um, when those meetings will be held. I know in Southborough, they have pushed their spring town meeting, um, out, uh, sometime in, um, potentially early May, and um, at this time, Northborough's meeting still is scheduled for Monday, April twenty-sixth, but again, like everything else, uh, in the pandemic, it's subject to change. So just like to begin, um, talking before presenting that FY twenty-two budget, uh, speak to where we left off in FY twenty-one. So this table basically speaks about the budget process that took place in FY twenty-one. And really the most, uh, important rows that I'd like you to focus in on are the last two, um, where it says School Committee Voted Budget in February. So our intention was to bring forth to the taxpayers and town voters in Northborough and Southborough, three point three-one percent budget. However, as we all know, the pandemic, um, created some uncertainty in terms of the economic landscape, and we, um, as a leadership team, went back to the budget and actually reduced it to a one point five zero percent. And that's important because, again, um, it was reduced from, uh, what we had hoped to ask if all things, you know, pandemic did not happen. And in terms of the impact of, of the reduced budget, you know, we did have a reduction of three point nine, a full-time equivalent, employees. We deferred technology purchases, classroom textbooks, materials, general supplies, and library materials, um, knowing that, you know, um, we had to get to that one point five percent. So, uh, in terms of the work that we did this year, um, so with the reauthorization of the strategic plan, um, the school committee did spend time, as you know, thinking about, um, its budget priorities. And, and the budget priorities really are essential for, um, the leadership team, the, at the Algonquin and at the Central Office, to think about what we, what we want to accomplish. Um, and these are our, um, principles that we use when making difficult decisions about what we want to fund or not fund in terms of, of, of limited resources. So in terms of, uh, the budget variables, as we entered into the FY twenty-two budget process, so, um, contractual obligations, so we had a one-year, uh, contract for the custodians. Um, we were hoping to enter into a three-year contract, however, um, because of the uncertain landscape of, and that the pandemic, we had a one-year contract. Uh, chapter seventy funding, um, and new legislation, so we were not sure of what, at what levels the Student Opportunity Act would be funded. Um, so again, with the governor's, um, House One budget, we have some, um, some data to support that it potentially will be funded in this upcoming budget year. Um, out of district special education funding and Circuit Breaker, um, regional transportation, all of those, uh, those funding sources that we rely on at the regional level, um, are always uncertain. And then, um, I just put the COVID nineteen, twenty twenty-two expenses. Um, I am anticipating that we will be continuing with the mitigation protocols, um, at least early in the fall as we reopen. Um, so we are, uh, anticipating that there'll be some expenses related to, uh, the band, pandemic in the fall of twenty-one. And lastly, just the overall town's economic landscape, so, um, the towns have been put in a very challenging, uh, position in terms of what the overall impact of the pandemic. Um, I think I've been, I've worked closely with Town Administrator, Mark Purple, in, in Southborough and Northborough, Town Administrator John Kader, um, to get a sense of, um, you know, what are the limitations of the town's budgets and, and we've worked very cooperatively, uh, moving forward in this process. So in terms of some of the budget drivers, um, for this FY twenty-two budget, um, really technology, so restoring some of the deferred, um, technology requests. Um, also, we've seen a significant increase in the Worcester Regional Retirement System Assessment. Uh, we saw seventeen to twenty percent increase that was, um, unanticipated. Um, we saw some increases in health, liability, and workers' comp. Um, and then one of the major drivers that we saw is special education tuition out of district. Again, um, a couple of students who require out-of-district placement, um, in order for the district to service the students' needs, and those are, uh, residential placements, uh, which are very costly, but important for the students to access in order to meet, uh, the needs. And lastly, totals and line item increases, so, um, the overall increase for budget drivers, um, was eight hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. In terms of, um, budget offsets, um, so to this FY twenty-two budget, we did, um, use Circuit Breaker reimbursement of five hundred and sixty thousand. Um, we did have retirements and, um, leave of absences, um, which was a little over two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Um, we did see reserve and revolving account funds, and as you, as you may recall, as a result of the, uh, pandemic in the spring, we were able to, um, put, uh, some money into our Transportation Reserve Account, um, a total of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and then we had line item reductions, really, um, Sean and his leadership team really looking at those line items and thinking about, um, you know, what types of resources do we need to sustain and maintain the programs we have. And lastly, um, applying grant funds, um, ESER and IDEA. Um, and the total in terms of the budget offsets was a little bit over one point, uh, two million dollars. So in terms of the fiscal year twenty-two, a recommended budget, um, really reflects for the most part a level services budget with growth in a few targeted areas. Uh, the recommended budget is twenty-four million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars, which is a, um, recommended budget increase of eight hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars, which reflects a three point five percent increase over, um, FY twenty-one. And again, if we compared this, uh, budget increase to what we were hoping to bring forth to the voters of Northborough and Southborough pre-pandemic, this budget would reflect a one point six-nine percent increase. So in summary, um, you know, I just want to, uh, compliment and commend, um, the leadership of Sean Bevan and his administrative team, uh, as well as Becky Pellegrino in the Central Office. Um, you know, as we looked at the beginning part of the budget process, we always begin, um, thinking about what if money was not an obstacle? Um, what are those, those types of expenditures and positions we'd like to fund? Um, those initial requests came in at eight point seven eight percent, um, increase over the FY twenty-one budget. Um, through many conversations and discussions, um, with the high school leadership team, Central Office, we were able to reduce that to four point seven, uh, percent increase. And then, um, the budget that we presented in January, um, we presented a three point five percent, uh, increase. And we did spend additional time looking to see if there were any other reductions that we could make. Um, and after additional conversations and discussions, um, again, this evening, we are bringing forth a twenty-four million, nine hundred and seventy-six dollar, seven, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollar, uh, budget, uh, which reflects a three point five percent increase over FY twenty-one. So in terms of, um, some of the growth areas, uh, in our, um, in this budget, and we, we do have, uh, funding to increase, um, resources in history and social science to align with the history and social science framework. Um, we also have some, uh, funding to, um, renew some of the mathematics resources we use in our, um, freshman and sophomore levels, and also investing in professional learning. You know, I think it's a theme that you heard this evening from our teachers around, um, you know, the value of professional learning and the impact it can have, and we are, um, a people organization and any investment we can, uh, make in terms of our faculty and staff, professional learning. in terms of our faculty and staff, professional learning is, pays out dividends for our students and our programming. Translation services is another area of growth. I know Rhoda Webb presented her EL program information last month. And one of the things that we've been working on is making sure that, you know, our families have access to the information in a way that is accessible to them. So making sure that, that communications that Principal Bevan, the central office, teachers send out are translated and also making sure we have interpretations of parent-teacher conferences, special education meetings, making sure that parents are receiving the information in a way that they can understand it. In this budget also is increased instructional capacity to support social emotional learning. So Dr. Lipton O'Connor did an outstanding job speaking about some of the work that we do around SEL at the high school. What I am proposing across the three districts is to develop a director of social emotional learning who will work across the three districts. So that would be a point four position in Northboro, point three in Southboro, and a point three at the regional level. And this is really to provide district-level leadership and coherence in our SEL programming across our pre-K through twelve experience. We have, have a lot of great experiences for our students that build upon each other. But sometimes I think we can do a better job with alignment, making sure we're maximizing the resources and really providing that district-level leadership to make sure there is a coherent program in terms of SEL. Also making sure that this person can stay current on the latest research and also provide our teacher, teachers with professional learning in the area of social emotional learning. And lastly, another growth area is again, automating some of the work we do around substitute management and absence, absences. Right now, it is a people-heavy endeavor in terms of, of making this work. And this software will allow us to be more efficient and use some of our people power in other, other areas. So in terms of the statutory regional assessment, so again, with the budget of twenty-four million, we do have some better data from earlier on in December and early January. So again, we have the projected chapter seventy aid from the governor's budget, which is three, a little over three point two million. We have our projected regional transportation aid. Again, this is the House One budget projection revenues, and then that totals a little over three point nine million. We subtract that from our total budget, offsetting it to twenty-one million, forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. And each community is given the minimum local contribution, which is calculated at the state level. So Northbrows is a little over eight point four million, and Southbrows is a little over four point nine million, which leaves for the FY twenty-two budget after required contributions of seven million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And that amount is apportioned by the regional agreement, which is by population. So Northbrows portion of Algonquin population as of the October twenty, October one twenty report was sixty-three point six four percent. And Southbrows portion was thirty-six point three six percent. So we can do that apportionment by agreement, and you add in the minimum local contribution for each community. Northbrows portion is thirteen million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, sixty-seven dollars. And then Southbrows portion is seven million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars. So each year, we've, the committee has done a great job of developing a policy for E and D, excess and deficiency. So through, through strong budgetary practices, at the end of the year, if we do have unexpended funds, that money does go into excess and deficiency account. And I think over the years, we've been able to create an E and, an E and, E and D account that again, can help reduce the town's assessments. The E and D's sole purpose is really to, to reduce assessments to the towns. And our recommendation in this budget is to apply five hundred thousand of E and D. And that would still allow the district to be in line with the E and D policy that the committee has established. By applying that E and D amount, the total assessment for Northbrows is a little over thirteen million. And for Southbrows, it's a little over three, seven point five million. And the difference from FY twenty-one, Northbrows is four hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, which reflects a three point three two percent increase. And for Southbrows, it's a hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars, which is a two point one, two point five one percent increase. So again, I think this is a, I think this is an educationally sound and fiscally responsible budget. I think it is, reflects level services, allows us to have, have some growth areas and allows us to maintain and sustain the staffing levels. And at this point, I will open up the conversation to any questions and any commentary.
I'll be waiting for if there are any questions from board members. I agree. Tonight, we will be taking a vote on this budget. Is that correct?
Correct. And typically, you would vote the assessment, the E and D assessments as well. And because the E and D are, is embedded in this budget, by voting this budget, you, you also are voting to the use of the E and D of five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay. So do we have to have, in the motion, we would need then the twenty-four million figure, the assessments, and then also the assessments to both towns? And then you're saying also the, the five hundred thousand were taken from E and D?
So by voting the assessments, you, you are in fact voting the use of the E and D?
So we don't have to put the five hundred thousand in the motion?
Correct.
Okay. Paul Bucka?
Thanks. Thank you, Joan. Just a, you know, a couple of things more for the committee than, than Greg. You know, I, I think using the E and D to come down to the, kind of the floor of our, of our E and D retain, retaining policy, you know, makes an awful lot of sense considering, considering the year and the, and the economic landscape of the towns. Taking in the five hundred grand. Well, I think our policy says we need to be around three or three and a quarter percent or something. And this gets us right to that. And I, I think that, that makes sense. I don't, I don't know that we need a cushion. What we've seen historically from the way Greg and, and Becky and Sean and the rest of the administration runs this, this whole plant, you know, I don't anticipate any kind of really out of the blue expenditures that would kind of knock us to the point where we would have to dip into all of that E and D and then go to the towns for more. I don't, I don't see that happening. The other thing that we had talked about in various meetings in the past was to create a, a capital budget reserve fund to, you know, as the plant gets a little bit older, we had, we had talked about doing that. We've met with advisory in Southboro, I don't know, a few weeks ago and, and discussed that with them. They were not keen on the idea. They, they felt it was not necessary and, and were more than willing to acknowledge that, yeah, every now and then, we're going to walk in the door with a big capital request that's going to make the prior year's budget look, look a little screwy. And, and, you know, they, they're willing to be realist enough to understand that that will happen. Felt that was a, a little wiser than chasing the capital reserve fund. And then lastly, I asked them if the other departments in town were still allocating money to contribute to their OPEB trust funds, and the answer was yes. And so I, I think that's something that, again, we should be planning on doing, doing this year. And, and we've talked, we've talked a lot about that in the, in the subcommittee meetings. You know, a pretty good budget, I think, altogether, you know, three and a half percent increase with enrollment going down a little bit, not necessarily the keenest thing in the world and isn't a strategy that we're going to be able to sustain forever. But, but I think that, I think that the team did a very good job of putting this together in tough times. So I would recommend that we approve this.
I would second that, Madam Chair.
I, I think we have to read the, excuse me, excuse me. I think we have to read the amount, the dollar amount into the motion along, as Greg said, the percentages for the assessments. Do you want me to give, do you want me to give you those numbers, Paul?
Yeah, if somebody's, if that's written down somewhere, then one of us can recite it.
Okay, so the budget total is, the recommended FY twenty, twenty-two budget is twenty-four million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. The Northboro portion by regional agreement would be an increase of three point three two percent. And Southbrows portion, apportioned by the regional agreement, is an increase of a two point five one percent.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so so moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Dan Kalenda. Any further discussion of the motion on the table? Seeing none? This is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Cavino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean Ashay?
Yes.
Kathleen Palczko?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, it passes unanimous. Thank you, guys. And thanks to the operational subcommittee. They do a great job. And thank you to Greg and to Becky and everyone who helps in the administration and principal in coming up with this budget as we go forward.
Right, next on the agenda, as part of the budget conversation, is excess and deficiency and other policy benefits. So this evening, joining us is Christine Teig, our regional treasurer, who does a fabulous job. So at the end of, of every fiscal year, Becky and Christine look at what are the, you know, unexpended funds that we can by law move into E and D. So what Becky and Christine Teig have done has done, have created some projections around what we think that amount of money will be that we can actually deposit into E and D at the end of this fiscal year. And the conversation we would like to have is, we, we do have the option, or the committee has an option to also put some, some of that funding into the OPEB account. So we could do a portion to excess and deficiency to replenish some of what we've expended this year. We also have an opportunity to fund some of OPEB. So Becky has a brief presentation to show what some of the projections are in concert with Christine Teig.
Christine, did you want to, to talk about the E and D first prior to my talking about the OPEB since yours explains mine?
Could you share the screen?
I sure can.
First of all, I want to say hello to the school committee. It's been a year. I think last January was the last time I saw everyone. But I would like to say, given these difficult times, you, you have all done an awesome job. And quite frankly, I'm glad to be a retired administrator for a school department. But this is basically how the E and D calculation works. As far as the process and, and the actual steps that the DOR looks at, we start out with certain scenarios based on my discussions with Becky as far as where we think we're coming in. We start out with undesignedated fund balance, the undesignedated fund balance. And then we add back the previous year's E and D. Historically, this, the, the district had been utilizing a significant amount of E and D and was starting to wean off of it. But given the past pandemic that occurred in two thousand twenty-one, we utilized three hundred thousand dollars. We're also anticipating utilizing five hundred thousand dollars for FY twenty-two. At first, I was somewhat concerned until I started to have discussions with Becky and her team, because I concentrate more on the revenue side of the house and then on the expenditure side of the house. And after my discussions with her, I felt a little bit more comfortable of utilizing a half a million dollars in E and D. My concern is not two thousand twenty-one, but go forward, two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, and sustainability of utilizing E and D to offset assessments. However, again, we're in difficult times. Based on various scenarios, I, we've looked at, if we, revenues will come in at budget. However, expenditures, we will be seeing surplus then, based on my discussions. And we looked at a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget to actual variance, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget to actual variance, and a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget to actual expenditure variance. Based on those scenarios, the E and D is anticipated to come in. Realistically, we're looking more at the middle road at nine, nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which represents, can you slide that down a bit, Becky?
Here we go.
Three point five percent, three point five three percent of budget, which is within the guidelines of the school committee. It's concerning, you know, the bud, the E and D, the, the E and D as a percent of the overall budget, which is, is not, that's somewhat realistic, I think. If anything, there's news concerning additional revenues that may come in federal relief. So we could be looking at the four point three percent if that continues, if that happens. Worst case, if we only see a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in budget, in budgetary turnbacks, we'd be looking at three point one five percent, which is below the S, you know, the anticipated policy. But I think realistically, we are looking at the middle road. Based on my discussions with our rating agencies historically in the past, they are obviously like to see us at five percent. But the fact that we have a policy, they appreciated that. And again, we were renewed as a triple-A rated community. I would urge the school committee at least to continue with at least reaching the minimum on the E and D. Any questions?
Christine, I don't see any questions at this time.
Thank you.
So, oh, I always do this. I think Cher is present. So based on Christine's scenarios that she did develop for E and D, one thing that we wanted to look at was if we were to apply a certain percentage of our E and, of the end-of-year balance, the variance between, you know, what was budgeted and what we actually expended. And to utilize some of that money to fund, again, the OPEB trust fund, just as we did in the FY twenty-one budget. So we've put together three different scenarios. We have a five, using five percent toward, of the E and D. Um, we have a five, using five percent, um, toward, of the E and D, um, towards, uh, the OPEB, a ten percent, and a fifteen percent in the three different categories. Um, the four hundred and fifty end of year balance, the two hundred and fifty end of year balance, and the one hundred and fifty thousand, um, end of year balance. And so for the committee, just giving you a few different scenarios to look at, where if we were to apply five percent, um, in that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range that Christine talked about as being the most likely scenario, um, we would be able to contribute an additional forty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. Um, ten percent would obviously be twice that amount, um, and at just about ninety-two thousand dollars, and then fifteen percent at, um, about one hundred and thirty-seven, um, thousand dollars.
Becky, if I could add, any E and D utilized to offset our OPEB liability would be not considered a strike against us as, as far as our rating with the rating agencies. If anything, they would see that as a positive, uh, reflection.
Thank you. And so our proposal would be to use any remaining funds at the end of the year prior to making the contribution into our E and D account. Um, and so this would be something that the committee could consider each year, um, whether we decide to do five percent, fifteen percent, give, you know, based on the year. Um, I did have conversations with a number of different, um, people in relation to their OPEB policies. I reached out to some fellow, fellow, um, regional school districts. Um, unfortunately, not many of them have written policies as to how they choose to fund their OPEB accounts. Many of them have kind of internal, um, procedures for that, but nothing adopted by the school committee. Um, I also spoke with Kate Canny at PARs, who, um, helped us to set up the trust fund. And in her work with, um, other regional school districts, she did advise us that if we were to set up a, um, policy through the school committee, that we do leave it loosely worded, that we, um, perhaps state that each budget cycle, we will review OPEB and make a determination as to how we are going to fund that, um, and not lock ourselves into a fixed, um, either dollar amount or percentage, because if we have a year such as we've had, um, that, and we're not able to fund to that level, then she recommend, then we could see a finding on our audit. Um, and so those were her recommendations in terms of policies. Um, but this would be something that we could internally discuss and maybe come up with a plan for future OPEB, um, contributions.
Okay, I have, uh, two members with questions, comments. First is Paul Bucka and then Dan Kalenda.
So, Becca, I'm, I'm just curious on this slide, it, it, the, where, where does the, so let's take the middle, and the, the most likely scenario that, that Christine mentioned would, would maybe end up with, what is the saying, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand? So she had about a nine hundred thousand dollar number in, in, in her middle, middle scenario, I thought, but I, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out where this four fifty versus two fifty versus one fifty across the top comes from. I, 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 I thought in Christine's prior slide, we were talking about end of year balances of, you know, more than a million in the nine hundred thousand range and in the, in the low eight hundred thousand range.
Sure, so the four fifty, two fifty, and one fifty, that was, um, those were the scenarios that Christine had put together. So that was based on what our end of year balance would be for our FY twenty-one budget.
So can you go back to her last slide?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
No, it's.
Oh, I can.
Can you see that?
So, isn't she saying that we're gonna have either a million one, or nine hundred and eighteen thousand, or eight hundred and nineteen thousand as our end of year balance?
So.
Those numbers.
So those numbers, those are her projections, but this would be in looking at, I'm gonna just put mine back up here again. Um, that would be taking off five percent, uh, before we put it into E and D. So it would reduce that, like, I, this.
Yeah.
The eight hundred and, hold on, I'm gonna close this again.
Yep.
So that would, the nine eighteen minus what we would contribute to the OPEB would then come up with the eight seventy-one. Eight seventy-eight, I think that was on the other page.
Okay.
All right.
I get it. So you, so you're applying the five percent against your number?
Yep, yes, yep.
All right, and then the eight seventy-three is what's left over?
In our E, in our E and D, which would still be within the range.
Sorry to be dense on that, thank you.
No, no, it's probably me.
Next time, Becky, just put another row in there.
Uh, Dan Kalenda?
So, thank you, Madam Chair, and Christine and Rebecca, thank you for, uh, keeping this front of mind. I mean, it, it, OPEB has been something that, uh, you know, we have an obligation to those who, who need these, um, funds, uh, you know, who have served our district well, and so, um, you know, so are, are, how aggressive can we be? I mean, I wanna be financially responsible and also be cognizant of our, of our significantly large OPEB outstanding, um, you know, uh, projected outstanding balance. So what are you recommending, um, that, that we could do that's, that's, that's aggressive, but also financially responsible?
Becky, can I, I'll take this.
Sure.
So the good news is we don't have to make a decision tonight. We actually can wait until the end of the year and actually see where our projections fall in. And at that point, we can bring it back to the committee, and before making a deposit into E and D, we can make a decision around what percentage the committee's comfortable with. So this is just kind of planting the seed around, um, you know, how can we create a mechanism to fund our OPEB liability, um, in a way that we haven't thought of in the past?
Okay, that, that makes perfect sense, Greg, and, and, uh, you know, again, I appreciate the fact that we're, we're doing this, we're talking about it, uh, probably more than other, other districts are. We did this in the town of Southborough, it started out at zero, we didn't have a fund. And now the town of Southborough has a fund, I believe the town of Northborough has something as well. Um, it's outstanding that the district is doing this. And again, I, I, we owe it to those who have served the district well to make sure that, uh, these funds are available to them. Thank you both.
Uh, Greg, can I comment on that for a minute, though? If you don't mind, um, I, I must re- remind the school committee, the difference between the two towns is they can have all, uh, surplus funds available, whereas a regional school district is limited to five percent by law. So, uh, just take that into consideration. It's, it's not like we have a, if any surplus we get, we can put into OPEB. We have to be mindful of having a surplus plus funding OPEB.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, next is Paul Desmond and then Sean O'Shea.
Thanks, Joan. Uh, Becky, could you put that slide, you just had that back up, please? If I'm reading this right, I mean, you said that the figure that we were recommending with nine nineteen figure was gonna be three point five three percent of the budget, which was, I think, just barely within our target range, is that right?
Yes.
Which means all these numbers that are in the eight hundreds or the seven hundreds would be below that range. Right?
Correct.
Let me go.
Yeah, we'd, we need, we need to recalculate the percent, whether, whether or not we're within our poli, school base policy.
Okay.
Yeah, so Paul, actually, if you look at the scenario with the one hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and eighteen thousand, um, was a three point one five. Um, sorry, I've got too many things here. Um, so if we were to do, let's say, five percent of that two hundred and fifty, we'd be at eight, so eight hundred seventy-three thousand. So we would still be within the school committee range. It would be, I think, once we got down to the low eight hundred thousands, that we would, um, fall outside of that.
Okay, so what, what is our policy on, on the range?
Um, it is three point two five to three point seven five.
Okay.
And again, I'd like to remind any, everyone, these are preliminary estimates. We probably won't have real final numbers more until May or June.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and Becky, do you wanna share your screen again?
Oh, I'd love to.
I think it's the same, same slide.
It is, yeah.
So.
Uh, Greg, Greg, can I just interject one second?
Sure, of course.
We did, um, on your a- agenda to us, you did have that there was gonna be a vote. But I know in the discussion, you said maybe wait. So are we gonna be waiting a couple months till we get the final figures?
Yeah, we should, that, yes, um, we're not ready to vote this evening, so that is accurate, Joan, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
So just, um, I know that over the, the years, there's been many conversations around student fees, um, at Algonquin Regional High School, and, um, Becky, if you can just go to the next slide. We did, um, we did receive recently a, um, complaint from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education through its problem resolution system. A parent complained, um, that basically the school is assessing a mandatory activity fee, uh, on all students. And basically, the position the parent took was that we're operating under a hybrid learning structure in that, uh, many students weren't participating in extracurricular activities. So the problem resolution system, the way it works is basically, we get signed, the district is assigned a contact person. I work, um, alongside this person to think about how we can, uh, remediate any issues. Um, so the, the short of it is that Mass General Law does allow us to collect a student activity fee. Um, at, at Algonquin, the student activity fee is fifty dollars. Um, and the way we've collected the fee is that we charge all students the activity fee, regardless if they participate in an extracurricular activity or not. So basically, the, the, um, issue is that we can charge a student activity fee if a student participates in a student activity. However, we can't if the student does not. Um, so it's really relooking at how we apply the student activity fee, um, in terms of, of, you know, when a student signs up, then we can charge. But if a student doesn't sign up, we, we don't have the right to. Um, so Becky will speak a little bit about the, the mechanism and, and what we're thinking. Um, but the next slide is, um, the minutes of Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. And I will note that, um, some, some people who were still on the committee in two thousand and twelve was, um, Mr. Paul Bucka, uh, Mrs. Joan Frank, um, and, uh, absent, um, this Kathleen Aragon Plachko and, uh, Dan Kalenda. At this meeting, basically, um, Dr. Cabron presented the FY thirteen recommended budget. And in his budget presentation, had embedded the, uh, addition of a student activity fee of fifty dollars. So there was no particular motion on this, the student activity fee other than it was embedded in Dr. Cabron's, um, recommended budget presentation. Um, and it was voted unanimously, unanimously, um, to approve the FY thirteen budget in assessments of the committee at that time. Um, so we've charged this fifty dollars student activity, uh, fee every year since. Um, and we do have some ideas around how to, how to correct this practice, so we are in alignment with Mass General Law. And I will have Becky kind of present some of the information from here.
So just a refresher on the student activity fee. Um, it, that is used to pay for advisor stipends for clubs and activities, and then also to purchase supplies for those same groups. Um, and what we have seen in this school year is that four hundred and eighty-nine students are participating in clubs and activities. And in speaking, um, with Michelle Capalvo at the high school, she is estimating that this is a reduction in produ, participation of approximately twenty-five to thirty percent from a normal, non-pandemic year. Um, they are seeing that some students, um, because they are, um, zooming quite frequently, that, um, a, an activity, activity or a club over Zoom is not really appealing to the student body. Um, so what we had done for FY twenty-two is we had increased the student activity line item by thirty-nine thousand, um, to, um, make up for the difference, um, using these numbers, um, of students participating based on what we would need to, um, fund the student activity advisor fees, um, and what we anticipate in receiving, um, for fees from students. And the plan going forward will be is once a student enrolls in a club or an activity, at that point in time, that's when the fee will be assessed. So similar to our, our athletic program where once a student is accepted onto a team, but that's when they would pay for the athletic fee.
So the larger conversation here is really, and I, I know I've, um, been working with the committee for six years, and I think every year, student, athletic, uh, fees come up as something that we, the committee would like to revisit and look at. I think the last analysis was done in, uh, two thousand and fifteen around athletic fees, parking fees, student activity fees. Um, my, my proposal is to provide Becky and me some time to put in a plan, um, a five-year plan with some different scenarios of how we can, uh, wean off, um, these, these fees of students, whether it's the student activity fee, athletic fee, or the parking fee. It's not something that we can do all in one year. Um, but unless we have a, a plan that outlines a pathway to get to a place where we're reducing fees, I think we'll be here every year talking about, we really wish we could reduce the fees. Um, so my recommendation this evening really is to, um, provide Becky and me with some time to present a multi-year plan to the committee, um, sometime in April or May, um, with some pathways, uh, in the future years of how we can reduce, uh, the fees that we're charging Algonquin students.
Uh, thank you, Greg. Uh, first, I, committee member to be recognized would be Paul Bucka and then Dan Kalenda.
Thank you, Joan, yeah, so I was there when we, when we passed this, uh, uh, and, you know, there, there was a lot of conversation about it. And, you know, that, that not all students participated in activities and the like. And, and just kind of as a, as a reminder to, or maybe a first time ever that you've heard it, to, uh, the committee members and the administration, there were two particular student activities that were identified at the time as activities that a hundred percent of those classes participated in. And that was the freshman orientation, uh, program that we ran every year and, um, and high school graduation. And, you know, both of them are events that cost money. And, um, you know, a hundred percent of the freshmen have the opportunity to participate, a hundred percent of the seniors participate in, in graduation, plus all the other activities that are open, you know, all year long to all four grades. And so the thought was, you know, the, 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 the vast majority of students every year would, in fact, participate in some student activity or other. Um, and, and we finally, and at, at a year where you saw that, that budget actually went up five and a quarter percent, you know, we were looking for ways to not go to the towns, looking for any more money than we needed. And that, that seventy grand or seventy-five grand a year that we picked up in activity fee money was one solution that we, that we, uh, kind of keened on. But there was a lot of talk at the time about, you know, do kids all participate in activities? And why are we charging it and calling it an activity fee if they're not participating and making them pay? And, and, uh, those two are, are items that came up kind of loud and clear in the discussions that we have. And, and, uh, those two are, are items that came up kind of loud and clear in the discussions that we had that day. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Paul. Dan Kalenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so clearly that was a meeting I should not have missed, back with Dr. Cabron back in two thousand and twelve, so, um, uh.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Kalenda.
My, my pleasure, uh, Mr. Superintendent. So, uh, uh, and if, if I haven't expressed this before, I'll, I'll, I'll do it now for everyone's, uh, uh, joy. You know, I despise these fees and, and I think many, many parents despise these fees. And, uh, you know, every freshman who attends orientation, okay? The, the vast majority of those are going to attend graduation. So why do we, you know, why do we have to charge them fees to attend a, an orientation and a graduation? Um, why do we charge people, uh, students, charge families, uh, to, to play a sport? Or to, um, you know, to be in a band or to, uh, participate in a, in a, in a school program? Uh, you know, these are things we want to encourage our students to do, not discourage them by assessing a, a fine, as I've called it before, or a fee, to actually do that. Uh, for the seventy thousand or so dollars that get added to the budget, um, you know, let's go back in time and, and anyone on this committee, anyone in the, in the administration can go back and look at those annual town meetings in Northborough and Southborough every single year that budget will pass. Uh, oftentimes, it passes unanimously, it passes without even a question because, uh, the towns of Northborough and Southborough, the residents, the families are used to professionals like, on this committee, professionals like in the administration who put together a well-thought-out reasoned budget every single year. And I guarantee you, I am positive that if we added, uh, if we got rid of activity fees, uh, and, and even if, 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 if Mr. Superintendent wants to do it over time, I'm all in. Um, but even if we got rid of fees tomorrow, those budgets will pass overwhelmingly. And I think you're going to see a, a, a resounding exhale of relief from parents who get assessed fees every time they seem to log into the Algonquin website and there's another fee that they haven't paid. Here's fifty more bucks coming out, another two hundred dollars coming out. Um, I would ask that we stop nickel and diming, uh, you know, hardworking parents in the towns of Northborough and Southborough and put it into the overall budget. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, next up is Karen Ayers, then Chris Covino and Kathleen Pletchko.
Thank you. Um, this is a great step in the right direction, I definitely agree with Dan and, um, yeah, um, you know, talking about the slippery slope that Chris brought up of, uh, school choice and, and you too, Greg, um, you know, I've been in a district where we ha- we had to charge fees for everything. Um, and we had to rely on school choice and, and we're frankly, we're just not one of them. And I just, I do agree with Dan that we can find another way and I, I like your plan. And I would also like to add into that kind of discussion and, you know, bringing back on, on Paul's point, you know, class dues, and those are completely necessary, I'm not disagreeing, we don't need those, but there needs to be some transparency on what those dues are for because I think there's a lot of confusion out there as to, you know, my assumption is the class dues go to freshman orientation, you pay a freshman due, it goes to freshman orientation. It helps pay for graduation and, and all those other things that, um, Principal Bevan was talking about for the seniors. So, and there also isn't a great system for saying, you've already paid your dues. And, and where's the receipt for that? Because I'm telling you, people pay them lots, you know, through, through the, I was just talking to a friend the other day, he said, I swear to God, I paid him five times because I, I, I don't know if I'm paying it. And so there really needs to be a better system. So I'm glad we're having this conversation, I welcome this conversation and I hope that, you know, we can really streamline, um, all, all of these processes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Chris Covino?
Thanks, Joan, um, a couple of comments. Um, I absolutely am in favor of, uh, elimination of the student activity fee, um, per the reasons that Karen and Dan have mentioned. Um, it represents a very, very small portion of the budget. Um, but I guess what I would like to say is that there's a distinction in the types of fees that we have. So I have a question for Greg, which would be, um, do, are all students entitled, at least all students within a certain distance of the school or beyond a certain distance of the school? Are they all entitled to, uh, bus transportation from Southborough and Northborough?
Be- because we are a regional school, yeah, yep.
So, you know, there's a difference between an athletic fee and a parking fee and a student activity fee. You know, we pro- we provide transportation for students. Um, so parking, you know, a student driving to school really is an option that a student can exercise. And I don't know how the parking fees are spent, but I would make at least a part of an assumption that that is, those fees are used to maintain the lots, um, that the students park in. Um, please correct me if I'm, I'm, I'm wrong, I would assume that that's what it's used to offset. Um, you know, student activity fees, you know, all students, as far as I'm aware, are able to participate in any activity that they wish. Um, so student activities are open to all students. Um, and I would distinguish that from athletic fees in that, um, and again, please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that athletics, they can, you can be cut from, from a team. So it's not, um, everybody has the opportunity to try out for a team, but not everybody is going to be able to participate in a team. So it is this kind of additional, uh, and again, this is my, obviously my opinion, but it's an additional piece beyond, um, you know, the normal school or academic environment. It's an important part, but it is in addition to, um, you know, the, the services that we normally provide. Um, well, it, I mean, an important part of what we provide. Um, so I guess that's what I would say related to activity fees, I think it's, um, I look forward to seeing the plan, uh, that administration develops, uh, to eliminate these fees. I would like to see them gone, specifically the activity fees gone tomorrow. And, um, I guess I'm just going to make a, a slight comment related to the discussion that we're having here. Um, and that is that, um, and I, I, you know, there's, there's, I, I've been kind of formulating some thoughts related to this, but these are the types of discussions I think that are essential for school committees to have. Um, you know, we're responsible for, um, one of our primary responsibilities is, you know, the budget, we're responsible for looking at the budget. And I think that as a committee, we really have to look at, um, right now, it's almost ten thirty and this meeting started at six thirty. And we have to look at how we can streamline these meetings to what the essential role of the committee is. Our budget discussion here is at the very end of the meeting where the budget is one of our primary responsibilities under the law. So I think we really do need to look at the structure of these meetings and important discussions. I'm not saying the other discussions aren't important, but they're not necessarily primary to what we're supposed to be doing. I think that, um, this is an important discussion to have and, um, so that's just kind of my little opinion on the side here. But, um, I really look forward to seeing the plan for eliminating, uh, or phasing out these fees, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Kathleen Pletchko?
So though I wasn't in that actual meeting where we, um, apparently approved these days, I have been in every single advisory committee presentation that the school committee has done since two thousand and eight. And, um, what I will tell you is, there's not a member on the school committee at Algonquin, Northborough or Southborough, or any one of the members of the, um, administration who wanted to introduce fees into this equation. But the advisory committee in Southborough put our backs against the wall. And they were very, very lean years and we were, then there was talk about cutting freshman athletics because something had to give. So they pushed us because all the other towns were doing it, right? Cause I mean, that was just what was happening at the time. And so that's how the, this got introduced into the, uh, equation. So it's not that anybody wanted to, it's that we were kind of, our hand was forced. So it was the compromise. So I, I fully agree, we should phase them out. I think other towns have probably been phasing them out too, but that's how it all started, that's all.
Thanks for the history, Kathleen. Kathy Key?
So just quickly, um, and Greg, we had this conversation the other day and Keith, you might be able to answer. Cause I know this conversation came up a ton at Trotter when you were principal about, uh, about activity fees. My assumption is if we're going to have this discussion at the regional level, that we're going to have the discussion at Trotter, Melican and other schools as well because I know you pay an activity fee at Trotter as well.
Yes.
So if we do it at one school, we have to do it, it has to be a discussion and a plan that goes the whole.
We have to, it's basically Mass General Law, uh, in terms of how we collect these fees. So we will be looking at Trotter and Melican in the same, same way we're looking at the region.
Um, any follow-up, Kathy? Are you done?
I have it. Yeah, I'm done.
That's a good point. Um, Paul Desmond?
Thanks, Joan, um, I too am anti-fee, but Greg, I think that's, your, your plan is spot-on. And, um, and there's precedent for it at the K two-eight level at least in Southborough, if you, you were there. Um, that's how we got rid of the kindergarten tuition. It was, I think it, over the course of three years, we, you know, chipped away at it and, and incorporated into the operational budget. So, I mean, I, I think that's the way to go and I too look forward to seeing your plan. Thanks.
Kathleen, do you have a, Kathleen Pletchko, do you have a second comment?
No, I have a question, does Melican have these?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Greg, at this time, there are no other comments from board members. How do we proceed on this going forward?
So Becky and, Becky and I, um, will work with the principals and, and looking at a, you know, a multi-year plan that, um, phases out fees and does it in a way that doesn't have a one-year significant impact on the overall budget. Um, and then I think it's, it's bringing the plan forward for the committee's review and feedback.
Okay, and how do we move forward on, um, the, the complaint that came forward?
The, the complaint is basically, um, you know, we're, working with a high school, Michelle Capalvo, around which students have participated in an extracurricular, um, who, who have we collected fees from and who has not? And then if they have not, then we need to refund the activity fee to them. And that is, that is, um, speaking with the problem resolution, uh, system's lawyer as well. And we did work with our legal counsel as well on this topic.
And Becky, did you say that the amount might be thirty thousand? Uh, the amount for next year that we've included in the budget is an additional thirty-nine thousand. Um, at this point in time for this fiscal year, we, um, think that we have about fifty students who have paid, who have not participated in an activity. However, Michelle is still gathering information from the, um, advisors. Um, and so once we have a, a final number, we can report that back. But right now, so it's tentative, there's only fifty students that have not, uh.
That have paid.
Correct, correct. All right. Any other questions, comments, board members? Okay, I guess we're ready to move on to the next agenda item, which is old business, none at this time. And now we go to policy development and/or distribution. And in your packets are, they, just for, there's like a, oh, about ten of them, um, that are being, that have been approved at the last meeting. The next item we have is audience sharing, Greg, is there anyone in our audience?
We have one, one person.
One person, does that one person, would they like to participate in audience sharing? Have anything to share with us?
It does not look like. Your hands are raised.
Okay, so as we go on to our agenda, the next item that we have is personnel.
So in your packet is the distribution of the personnel report and also, um, at the March, uh, joint meeting, um, I'll be introducing, uh, Maurice Myrie. Um, so we're very fortunate to have, um, offered the position of Chief Information Officer and Chief Information Security Officer to Maurice, um, he has accepted the position. Um, he is currently the, uh, Director of Information Technology and Information Security Officer for the Worcester County Sheriff's Office. And, um, he will be beginning his work in our district on March fifteenth. And again, I'll introduce him more formally at the next, um, joint meeting in, in March.
Okay. Uh, next item we have is communications.
I had a question, I had a question on the, the personnel report, I'm, I'm just wondering about the guidance counselor that's taken a leave. How, how do you replace a guidance counselor?
I mean, do you give up the kids among the existing ones or, you know, you know what I mean? It's not like, it seems like it's not like you can just hire a new one because he's got no relationship with all these kids and he's only going to be there for a year, so, so what's the plan there?
Yeah, that's a, the, that's an excellent question, uh, guidance is a very difficult position to, to find a court, a, uh, cover for a leave, um, but it happens, we have, there are years where we have maternity leaves are pretty common and, and, uh, in any department and guidance is, uh, certainly no, uh, no stranger to, to maternity leave. So, uh, this would be an example, uh, so we, we have a plan that we're, we're considering. We, we have had interns, uh, who've worked really closely in that department already, we have one in there currently. Um, that might be a, a possibility for somebody who is known to our school, been in the school a great deal and has, uh, forged relationships with kids. And so it would be a much, uh, uh, less steep learning curve and, um, um, uh, and, and, and easier fit than posting outside of the school, which we would do anyway. Um, but we, I think we have some candidates that, uh, that might provide us some, um, some relief there without, uh, without the, some of the pain points of a, a natural posting where you're bringing in outside people to have a year where they're trying to get to know kids. Um, we're also, in addition to that, uh, Mr. Desmond, looking at having the person who's going out on leave, um, be paid for, uh, small portions of time in the, in the year while they're out on leave to, uh, see their seniors out, senior, see, assist their seniors in, um, in the process of applying to colleges and writing recommendations and things. So it would be a leave that, uh, that the person would be taking, but we would ask them to, to be almost on retainer or, or be kind of, um, contracted for very small portions of time to make sure the seniors are serviced, uh, well enough.
Okay, thank you, that was my largest concern, the seniors.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very healthy concern and that was mine as well.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, going on, um, to the agenda communications, there's none at this time. Approval of bills and payrolls, we have a subcommittee that was working on that. Uh, and the last item is agenda items for next month. So far, we have public hearing, uh, for the FY twenty-twenty-two budget. Uh, some long-term things we have is a school choice discussion in April and a possible public hearing on that in May. And then also what, um, um, and then maybe an update coming in April would also be the student fees. And a couple of scenarios, um, on that, how we can look at those student fees and how we can decrease them and eliminate them through time. Is there any other agenda items somebody would like to propose? Or I missed? Paul Buckett?
Thanks, Joan, um, so when we're talking about future items, what month would we be making the OPEB this year? Would that come this, this, uh, school year?
June.
So maybe, Joan, from a, from a future agenda item point of view, the decision of how much E and B we would allocate to the OPEB trust fund would be, uh, an item in, uh, uh, May or June, December.
Okay, and maybe we could have it, um, you know, just like we're doing school choice, have a discussion in May or the vote in June. Is that okay, Greg?
Yeah, I think the only other topic is, is the, um, increasing in-person learning. Yeah, I think the only other topic is, is the increasing in-person learning. I think potentially we might meet before our next meeting. But I think if we put it as a placeholder for our next March meeting, we'll, we'll be in a very different place at that point in time.
Okay, great. Fantastic.
Madam Chair, forgive me if I, you maybe mentioned this and, and this is for the April meeting, but the mascot study, review study group is, will be providing a recommendation to the committee. We're on target to deliver that on April, the April twenty-eighth meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything from the Coalition of Equity Committee?
We're doing an update at the joint meeting on March, in March.
Okay. All right. Anything else from any board members or administration? Thank you for those updates. Appreciate it. Look forward to hearing about the mascot study and making their, their recommendation on April the twenty-eighth meeting. Seeing none, the next meetings, as you can see, we have our normal regional meeting on Wednesday, March the seventeenth, and then a combined school committee meeting on that same day. So at this time, if there is no other business coming before the committee, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn at the time of ten forty. Second, Paul, made by Paul Bucka, seconded by Karen?
Seconded by everyone.
I know.
Are you sure you guys don't want to stay another five minutes? Okay, but let's go. Karen Ayers. Paul Buck?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
Yes, please.
Kathy Key?
Yes, but you realize if we start doing these in person again, if the lights will go out in the high school, it'll be much longer.
We'll have to stand up and wave like we used to, right? Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Shawna Shay?
Yes.
Kathleen Pletchko?
Yes.
And myself, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for the great discussion, great ideas. And Greg and I will talk about these as we go and make the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you, guys. Good night.